Good evening and welcome to the Isaguas City Council Budget Study Session for Monday, October 14th. We are going to go through departmental presentations this evening, and then I think at the end, if there's time, we're going to do a summary of where we're at and where we go to when we start council deliberations at the next budget meeting. So with that, I'm going to hand things over to our city administrator, Wally Bobquitz.
Good evening, Council. We are coming to the end of our multiple nights of presentations this evening. We have the presentations by the departments. I've asked Beth to give a little preamble to start us off, then you'll hear from the departments, and then as the council president indicated, our plan is to kind of start a sort of summation process and then follow your direction on the next steps for this evening, and if you'd like to come up with some thoughts on how you'd like to proceed from there, we'd be happy to discuss that as well. So unless there's any initial questions, I'll let Beth Goldberg get us started.
Good evening, everyone. So as city administrator Bobquitz indicated, I just want to give a preamble. It sounds like we're about ready to enact the Constitution. It's not quite that big of a deal, but the preamble. So the plan for tonight is to have the departments provide you with overviews of their 2019 accomplishments as well as their 2020 work plans. They are not going to be presenting the details of their budgets, per se. We largely talked about that last week, but we wanted you to have an awareness of those work plans as they are very much related and the budgets we are asking you to approve would support those work plan items. As you are thinking about the work plan items, I would like you to think back to a couple of the slides that we presented last week that showed our FTE levels and how those FTE levels compare with population growth in recent years. And you will recall that those charts showed that our FTE levels have remained -- are not keeping pace with the growth of population in the region. And while not one-for-one measure of workload, it is, as we serve more residents, there are impacts on the workload, and the FTE growth just has not kept pace. So staff are basically doing more with less. And so as you hear them talking about the work plans, that is, you know, we're absorbing quite a bit of workload. This is also a segue into another topic that I wanted to cover tonight. As you're hearing the departments present their work plans, you will hear them weave in things they are doing to meet the strategic plan objectives. And there was a question last week about how the strategic plan was influencing and informed budget decisions, and I want to expand on that a little bit. So when the strategic plan was originally adopted earlier this year, we knew, the city knew money was going to be tight, and it was going to be a challenge even under growing revenue circumstances, slightly growing revenue circumstances, to meet all of those objectives. What has happened since the strategic plan was adopted is better understanding of a revenue picture, and we're facing now a budget shortfall that was not anticipated when the strategic plan was contemplated. So what that means for the budget is we weren't able to add as many things as had been hoped under the strategic plan, and what we did as a staff is tried to identify ways to meet the strategic plan objectives with existing resources. Does this mean we can do it all? No, it does not mean we can't do it all, but what we looked for are ways that we could do things with staff-led processes, phasing in projects, taking a little longer to complete them. So you'll hear people touch on strategic plan items, but as people are doing that, please know it's with existing resources, and it may not be fully what was envisioned. You will also hear the Parks Department and the Office of Sustainability talk about a couple of work program items that meet the environmental objectives of the strategic plan. They were not captured in the chart that we presented last week, and we apologize for that, but Jeff and David will talk about how their work plan is going to meet -- there are specific items in their work plan that are meeting that environmental objective. So with that, I will stop and turn this over to the departments.
Actually, I am sorry, I have one question. So there were environmental goals, but there were also environmental work plan proposed items, right? So the -- as the subject comes up this evening, David and Jeff are going to talk about how their departments meet the goals or address some or any of the proposed actions or...
I'm sorry, I misspoke. The actions.
The action.
So, you know, the goals and that through action.
Through actions that had been...
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, and they can speak to those more specifically. I will not try and be David, or I will not try and be Jeff, because I won't do a very good job of it.
And they would not try to be you, I assume?
They could try.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Thanks.
Hi again. I'm Autumn Monahan, the Assistant to the City Administrator. I'll be covering several city departments or divisions to kick us off tonight. First one is our Executive Department. So for a department overview, we have 5.75 employees. That includes the mayor, city administrator, deputy city administrator, a management analyst, and our arts program administrator. This team has several roles, including serving as the direct reports for all other departments. Our team also oversees city legal and lobbying services, including our contract with Ogden Murphy Wallace. We manage lawsuits and both our prosecution and public defense contracts. We're also the liaison to the Isaguas Municipal Court, which provides court services to Isaguas as well as North Bend and Snoqualmie, and you hear more about our municipal court later tonight from our court administrator. And finally, we also manage our municipal arts program and fund. For 2019 accomplishments, we led a team of 12 staff from across various levels of the organization to create an employee experience plan. In connection to the strategic plan, in 2019, we implemented improvements to the employee experience by fostering development, organizational values, and connection through enhanced communication. Specific examples include finding new ways to recognize employees who provide excellent service, modernizing our employee valuations and feedback, hosting all-city meetings to enhance communication, and providing all-city trainings to boost staff capacity. Concerning our legislative agenda, we achieved two key successes this year: a state grant for the TOD Opportunity Center and money for the PFAS Pilot Study Design. We also had great accomplishments to share related to our arts program. In total, our arts grants alone invested $175,000 into projects that ultimately had a $9.5 million impact on our local economy, and we'd love to invite our arts program administrator, Amy Dukes, to return in early 2020 to talk a bit more about her program. Tonight, we're focused more on the general fund. Here is a photo of our all-staff training in 2019, and we anticipate some more targeted training to occur in 2020 to further help build internal skill sets. As far as 2020 projects, we'll be initiating assessment of city services, implementing and measuring the strategic plan, leading discussions on possible ballot initiative that's a strategic plan item, further implementing improvements to the employee experience, which is also a strategic plan item, and developing a regional agenda. As I said, I'm wearing many hats tonight, so I'll also review now the city clerks. Do you have any questions?
I think there's a question from Councilmember Ray.
Yeah, I think it'd probably be easier if we just took a brief pause after each segment. So just a question about further implementing improvements to this employee experience. What is that?
So we got together a team of 12 employees that represent different departments and different levels at the city and asked them some questions about...
The kind of place we want to be.
The kind of place we want to be, thank you. I bet Stephanie could better articulate that as it was developed through a combination with HR.
Hi, Stephanie with HR. I'm also going to talk about the strategic -- or excuse me, the employee experience plan, but the city took on an initiative to look at a better way to look at performance improvement, aligning individuals to city goals, rewarding and recognizing folks, and making the overall employee experience an enhanced process for employees. And so the Executive Department, along with Human Resources, started that work in 2019. We've implemented some phases of that that we will continue to work on in 2020.
Councilmember Ray, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just -- I'm just really curious how we would measure success in something like that, because that's pretty squishy.
Yeah, for sure. So one of the things that we've been doing all along is surveying or poll-surveying staff in a variety of things. So Autumn mentioned that we've done things like institute all-city meetings, work with the check-ins. We, I think, success has a lot to do with retention of staff and some things that we'll be able to better measure as time goes on. We're still looking at ways to do that, but right now, the first phase has been to look at the way in which we -- in which we look at performance management, and then certainly we'll try to keep more metrics in future on opportunities that staff have in regards to training and other things that are keeping them here and retaining them in the city. So we'll look for ways to enhance that.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. This is for Autumn. Autumn, overall, the Executive Department does have a percentage decrease of 2.9% in its year-over-year budget proposed, but that also includes a 22% increase in legal services. I'm wondering if you can give me some of the backstory on why we would be budgeting so much higher for legal services?
From my understanding, the budget better reflects what our total cost is for legal services.
So what's driving that? Are you saying that past budget, this is just a status quo year, and the past budgets were really low?
I'm phoning a friend as well.
Okay.
So yes, past budgets for legal services has been below what our actual experience has been. So we've had a number of fairly large legal cases that Ogden Murphy Wallace have been handling for us, and so in this year's budget, we are seeking to better align the budgeted amount with what the actual needs have been over recent years.
And, okay, and then, so are you saying that -- so did you take a look at what we think the legal services requirements will be and said, you know, we've got this, this, and this going on? It's not just a formulaic dialect?
No.
Looked at demand?
We looked at demand, and we have been under-budgeting for recent demand, and we are anticipating that demand to continue at similar levels now. You know, there are ebbs and flows with legal workload, and you can't always predict, but we are trying to do a better job with this budget of predicting what those actual needs are.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Autumn, you mentioned in the 2019 accomplishments that managed $175,000 arts grant program and leveraged an additional $9.5 million. Can you explain that a little more?
So of all of the different programs that we funded through the $175,000, in total, all of those programs added up to that $9 million.
So if you add up all of the, what, the budgets for all of those programs that we provided, $175,000 to...
Some contribution to, yes.
Okay. Not sure that leverages, but thanks for explaining.
So any other questions on the executive before we move on? Council Deputy President Batiste.
Just one follow-up question, and this may be for Director Goldberg. On the legal budget and in terms of taking a look at demand and looking backwards in terms of what has happened in the past, is that something where Ogden Wallace also comes forward with proposed budgets based on what they're thinking as well, or is that work all done in terms of coming up with that budget number on the side of the city?
So there are two components of the legal work. There's the day-to-day city attorney work, and then there is work on the lawsuits themselves. And I am not involved with managing those contracts, per se, so I can't speak with the back-and-forth that may go on in terms of how a budget is set at the outset. But what we did for this year's budget is look more at the trends rather than estimating what individual cases would cost. We looked more at the trend lines than individual cases.
Okay. Thank you.
And there are no further questions. Now.
All right, next is our city clerk's office. So our clerk's division has three employees: the city clerk, the deputy city clerk, and a public records analyst. The office provides legislative meeting management as well as public and legal notifications, maintains essential records, manages requests for public records, serves as our liaison to King County Elections Office, issues cemetery deeds, manages our boards and commissions' recruitment process, as well as the open government training requirements. In 2019, the team's accomplishments included launching a public records portal online, revising internal records policies, adopting council's rules of procedure, transitioning to a new study session format for city council, and sunsetting the library board. 2020 projects include facilitating special ballot items with the King County Elections Office, evaluating, recommending, implementing a new records -- public records fee structure, continuing efforts with citywide records retention, beginning the implementation phase of an electronic records management system, and continuing to review, monitor, and refine the study session format with city council. Any questions on clerks?
Councilmember Ray.
Just a couple. So begin the implementation phase of electronic management system, electronic records management? You threw that one. You inserted an extra word in there.
Oh.
So are you beginning the implementation, or has it already been implemented, or where are we with that?
We're definitely in the very, very beginning of implementation.
What is that?
So this is a way to manage more records online through the clerk's office, and I don't know all of the details on that, but I definitely, Tina, can get back to you, our city clerk.
And is there something similar being done in other departments? It seems like this is a need that I've seen other departments looking forward to?
Most definitely, and I know that our deputy city clerk, Tisha, has started a committee with several different staff members on working on ensuring that all departments are participating in how to best translate a lot of our hard copy records into electronic.
So this, we're -- sorry to be laboring this, I just want to understand it. Are we talking about a single electronic records management system for the city, and the clerk's office is taking the lead on said system? Is that what this means?
Councilmember Ray, we're in the first stages of this. John Traeger is in the building, and if he's listening, maybe he will come down and help me as I walk through this, because he and I just talked about this a few days ago. I think we see the clerk as one of the heaviest users of a system like this, and so our initial take is to have the clerk's office move forward with an evaluation, and I think once we get to the sense of what will work for the clerk's office, we'll then look at the rest of the city to make sure that as we look, especially for police records, for example, we would want a system that has that kind of flexibility. So we're moving forward slowly. I think the clerk's office has skills and expertise with the records management piece as much as the electronic portion of this, and so that's why we're going to start with the clerk. But yes, this will be the precursor of a larger initiative.
Okay. Last question, I promise. I don't see it in the clerk's budget. Is it in the IT budget, or where is this, the funding for said system?
It's in the IT budget.
Is it called out when we get to it? I see Director Traeger coming down the steps.
As I encourage the directors to be nearby, but not necessarily in the room.
Well, there you go.
This is the first test of that.
And a successful test at that.
John, we're talking about records management as it pertains to the city clerk's department starting a process, and the council's been asking some questions as you were coming down about what this means moving forward, what the costs are anticipated in your budget for 2020 to support the clerk's office, and then any other thoughts you have for this moving forward enterprise-wide.
Okay, this is John Traeger, IT manager. So that project, it was in the CIP, and I think it was about $100,000 for the first year, and that would start with the clerk's direction, and I believe they were looking at police records. It was the last thing I heard from the clerk's office that they were going to do with that. And so we'd have to go through vendor selection in January and start the program, and then I don't have any other detail until they actually get started and we see what the vendor has.
Councilmember Ray, you look like you have a follow-up question.
I'm just trying to figure out where it is in the budget. I mean, it's a real simple question. Is it in police, is it in the clerks, is it in IT? There's some money here, and I can't find it here.
It's in the CIP, and it was in IT budget.
But it should be in the annual budget, too.
It's in the capital section, wherever that is in the book.
So let's take that as a follow-up question. Deputy Council President Batiste.
So thank you. I think we're back to Autumn.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation tonight. I know that in the past, we've talked a lot about the additional needs for requests coming through for public records, and some of these systems have been able to help with that. I'm wondering kind of about the workload and what may have changed since last time we spoke about that.
Sure. Since we've launched the public records portal online, I know that it's been a lot easier for clerks to manage incoming requests, ensure we're meeting deadlines, assigning different tasks to different employees to make sure that they're producing the records so clerks can package them up. So that's been a very useful tool, both for the public and for the clerk's office in managing records. There is still a lot of standardization we need to do as a city that the clerk's office is spearheading, and again, they are working with an interdepartmental team to work on standardizing processes around records retention.
Great. Are there metrics that you're sort of using in terms of this is kind of where we were, and this is where we are now, and this is where we hope to be?
I can ask Tisha to get back to you on that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Tina.
Other questions on the clerk's office presentation?
And Council President, just for the council's information on page 120 of the capital budget, item TC 007, Electronic Management Software, $105,000.
Great. Thank you for getting back to us. So quickly on that one, some questions are easier answered than others. Any other -- no other questions? All right, please proceed.
Next up is communications. So our communications team has 4.75 employees, including myself, a communications coordinator who focuses on more online communications, our neighborhood engagement coordinator, which is more focused on in-person engagement, and then 1.75 FTEs that are funded through our cable TV fund that run our ICTV program. As a team, we manage a website that includes 1,700 pages. We also manage eight social media accounts. Our top four accounts have close to 24,000 followers, as well as our online survey tool. As a team, we serve as the news desk of the city. We produce the Isaguas Insider, which has 2,600 subscribers, and our Notify Me tool on our website, which has 9,300 subscriptions. We also operate ICTV Channel 21, producing all-city videos, and we cover public meetings. And we've been busy as a city. We've anticipated that there will be 142 meetings we've covered in 2019. We manage a neighborhood engagement program, and in 2018, we had 4,700 in-person interactions and 70,000 email impressions, and you heard more from Lisa earlier this year about her program. As a team, we also provide graphic support for graphic design and also events. And here's just a few examples and some visuals of our Isaguas Insider. We send it usually every Friday. It's once a week, as well as our Notify Me tool on our website, which allows subscribers to pick and choose what news they would like to receive from the city, and also a few social media interactions we've had this year. Here's also some photos of our neighborhood engagement program out in the community. We also maintain an online map that updates both the city council and our community about what we're hearing from different neighborhoods, from each of the meetings and interactions we have with the community, and I also included a photo from our most recent Sam and Days booth. For 2019 accomplishments, our website redesign will be done by the end of this year. We're conducting user testing next week, and then we'll present the final version of our website to you very soon. I presented earlier this year on the results of the National Community Survey. We're working closely with a team managing CRM or customer relationship management project. We're working on more proactive development outreach with our neighborhood engagement coordinator, who she briefed you on that a bit earlier this year. We're also working to design a welcome kit of city services that we can post online and also provide to new residents through a variety of tools, including apartment managers and realtors, and we'll be sure to share that with you once it's completed this year. We updated our ICTV studio and launched two new podcasts that our audience can both watch or listen. One is called Uniquely Isaguas, which is about fun stories around town, and the other is called Quan Order, which focuses on community policing. This has been a really fun tool for us to provide some more long-form storytelling instead of typically social media has a very short attention span, so we're finding this is a way to tell more of our community stories.
I think there's a question of Councilmember Winterstein.
Oh, when she's complete with her presentation.
Oh, I can wait.
Okay. And by the end of this year, we'll also be making improvements to council chambers to increase our usability of this room. Here's an example of our new and improved ICTV studio, and this is a screenshot from a recent podcast of Quan Order, and another example of our construction signs, which we're posting on active construction projects to alert residents about what's coming. There's also typically a realtor box on each of these signs where there's printed handouts that are updated monthly by developers on what the traffic or construction impacts will be. For 2020 projects, communications will support a potential ballot measure, which is a strategic plan item. We'll also be testing some new strategies for community engagement and incorporating results into planning efforts. This is a strategic plan item. Some initial ideas include some neighborhood mini-grants, some more proactive community outreach, instead of going to neighborhoods and we have something on our agenda or our work plan, and updating our engagement toolkit. I would like to focus on how we can work to close the engagement loop, both with those who engage with us and also with council. We'll be heavily focused next year on census outreach. It is 2020, and we'll be working with many departments, including sustainability, support services, and pretty much any team member who interacts with the community. And we'll continue to make improvements to our website, including integrating our new customer relationship management software, our online utility billing software, and more. So with that, any questions on communications?
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. In the budget, it shows a reduction, congratulations, by the way, a significant reduction in the one-time funding for completed projects. Now, that amount was $165,000. What did you accomplish and how did you accomplish it? It's not a capital cost. It came right out of your own department's budget. What was the nature of those projects, and how was that money used?
Sure. So three main projects. One is the CRM software, so that project will be completed hopefully by the end of this year, if not really next year as far as a launch. The second is our National Community Survey, which we are not conducting next year, so there's a cost savings there. And the third is there was some money allocated for city branding, and we decided to instead focus that project more on wayfinding, and so that money has not been reallocated.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Walsh.
Along those same lines, there is a reduction to IT projects of about 62,000. I'm going to assume that's related to the website implementation, or why is there a reduction there?
Some is the website redesign, and some is also that CRM software.
Both of which IT was involved with in 2019 and won't be in 2020.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question, and it's sort of one of those more qualitative, touchy-feely kind of...
kind of questions. First of all, I commend, under your leadership in this group, there's been a lot, a large increase in the number of ways that the city outreaches to the community, and I really appreciate that. The thing that, the challenge I have is I don't know amongst all those things what's working and what's not. You know, a while back, the council gave a really strong thumbs up to getting more council meetings on TV. When I have been, you know, when we have looked at the number of people that actually watch our council meetings, it's not a number that, you know, it's a smaller number than I would have assumed, riveting though our meetings are. And so it seems like at some point in 2020, it would be worth understanding at a high level, like what's working, reinforce success and prune, you know, lack of success around, you know, the fundamental principles that we have enshrined in the, you know, city strategic plan and, you know, city sort of operating procedures. So I don't know exactly what that looks like, but, you know, I see all this stuff, and it's all good, but it feels like there's a bunch of things that are, that are sort of, let's try this, and let's try this, and let's try this, and at some point, we'll have to prune. And I'd be interested to know when we prune and how we do so, and having that plan come before council.
One thing that we love about social media and also that we use YouTube is that we can finally see how many views we have. So before, when we were airing ICTV on Channel 21, it just went out to the world, and we had no idea. So it is really beneficial to go online and look at a lot of metrics that several social media platforms provide, and that's easily, easily something that we can put together for you as far as our success on different platforms and how many people we're reaching. We can even look at how long people are watching videos for or how many, so those types of metrics are readily available. Others in our program, like neighborhood engagement, is a bit more, like you said, it's more of that one-on-one interaction, and that's more of the, you know, hearing narrative among community members or neighborhoods that they have a connection with the city.
I think with ICTV, we did have unique IP visits to websites, and so we got a number that was a proxy for how many people had gone to specific council meetings or had watched websites on specific council meetings, and it was a low number. It was sometimes single digits for any particular council meeting. So, because I remember because City Administrator Harrison walked me through those numbers, but that was probably five years ago.
Okay. We can definitely provide you updated metrics on that.
Other questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, real quick, this is actually not a budget question, just, and maybe you can get back to me on this. Last year, when we talked about the implementation of a CRM system, oh yeah, Customer Relationship Management, ah, but I was corrected during the budget process. It was actually called Citizen Request Management. Now, this evening, I've heard you say Customer Relationship Management. Same thing, right? And we did a request management or a relationship? And I know, there's a difference.
It's all the same, many different names. We're working to rebrand it into something that is not CRM for the public.
Okay, so it's the same thing, but it's not request management. It is request.
It is request management, so it's how we best interact with and manage our customer requests.
Okay, that's the system that you've implemented. Thank you.
Oops, other questions? Councilmember Ray? No? You look quizzical. All right. Please proceed.
That's all I have at the moment. Thanks.
Oh, and I, so one of the things I'm trying to do with meetings like this is give people an idea of how we're pacing. I mean, we will sell the wine before it's time, but interestingly enough, we are on pace right now to be exactly three hours in the slide Q and A session. If you're wondering how we're pacing, we're pacing at three hours.
I'm not sure what to do with that piece of information.
No, it's, 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 this is more for my fellow councilmembers, really.
Awesome. Good evening, City Council. Keith Niven, Director of Development Services. This evening, I'm going to go through fairly quickly. So this is, this is how we've organized the department. The department is organized with basically these functions, so counter services, and those are really for people to answer, people walking in, asking if they can build a deck or a shed in their yard, those kind of questions. Permit services, so those are our permit techs. They manage the permit activity. We have current planning, which is land development, which is also paired with engineering. I should have put them next to each other. Building services, and then policy long range. And what you can see from this chart is, wow, the gray does not show up. Those positions that have red letters, so you've got two senior planners, lead building inspector, and a senior engineer, those are all proposed to not be filled in the 2020 budget. So for 2020, we are proposing 27 and 2/3 full-time equivalent staff members, and that's down from 31. 2019 accomplishments, so main function of Development Services is to review and issue permits. Right now, year-to-date for 2019, we're at 1,664 permits issued, 6205 inspections conducted. We have already updated our impact and mitigation fees, except for parks, and parks is on its way. Assume that that will be done later this year. Our Shoreline Master Program, we had an update. I think we still have some responses to get back to Councilmember Hunt, but that will be coming back to you sometime soon. Old Town Code amendments, those are going through Planning Policy Commission right now. We expect those to also be done. We updated the sidewalk use ordinance to apply it to Old Town. That was one of the recommendations coming out of the Old Town Plan Update. We made a commitment when we ended the development agreement for Izakua Highlands that we would go back and have a vision conversation with the community. That has been scheduled for November 7th at Blakely Hall at 7:00. So mark your calendars. We'll send out a notice so that you all can attend if you're interested. Comm Plan Docket, as we do annually, it's right now expected to be in front of you, November, December. And then we had to update the wireless communication code, and we did that in the first quarter of this year. 2020, so one of the biggest things we're working on right now, and as we mentioned when we started on this activity, it would take us about a year and a half to do it, and we are updating the Land Use Code Title 18. We are having a number of conversations with our consultants about that activity and have been working on kind of that scope of work. We expect that we will be coming to you guys in November to talk about kind of the big issues of substance related to that Land Use Code Amendment. There's more than I thought there was going to be, and so what we want to do is kind of go through that list and kind of get some of your impressions on which direction we should be going with that. But we still hope to get a draft out in January, February, with maybe adoption mid-year 2020. Old Town Architectural Manual, we have a consultant on board. We've had a stakeholder meeting already, and we're working on our public outreach for that activity. Buildable Lands Inventory and Growth Targets, this was a strategic plan item for you, which was giving us direction to be a little bit more strategic in our interactions with King County and PSRC on our growth targets. And so we're doing some of that inventory work right now, putting together the Buildable Lands Report, and so that'll be work that continues into next year. Housing Strategy III, what this one is, was basically inventorying our older multifamily residential projects in town to create a database and create a property owner list so that as those properties maybe sold, changed hands, there was an opportunity maybe to have some public involvement in making them more affordable long-term as they kind of aged. Neighborhood Engagement, this was also a strategic plan item. The concept between GD 4A and GD 1A was to go out into our neighborhoods and identify kind of the gaps in services and amenities and character each of those neighborhoods felt were important for their own identity, and to kind of develop a strategy for each of them. And, you know, just to be clear, because it's hard to understand what we mean here, I think what we had envisioned is we would go out and pilot one neighborhood next year and get a sense for how this is really going to work. And so I wanted to be clear that we weren't going to get to all the neighborhoods next year. If we get to, if we get one done, I think we'll be doing well. We still have an ongoing work effort with Lakes of Mamish on an EIS and a potential development agreement that we've talked about with them. There was scoping meeting at Pickering Barn earlier this year. They've hired a consultant, Bob Droll, to do the work, and we have a grant from Commerce to help us with this activity. And then last bullet item for 2020 is housing missing middle. This was another strategic plan work item, and this is really targeting, are there other housing products that we could allow that aren't allowed with our code right now that might come in at a price point that would be lower than what our median home value is right now, which is, I think, $800,000? So this is, this is looking for, you know, cottage housing, you know, we talked about SROs at one point, so this is looking at other housing choices that may not be in our community right now and may not necessarily be allowed by code. And so that's the last work item here.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Keith. I like your 2020 work plan. Those items regarding housing, your middle and last bullets are especially important. I think they all are, so I like that plan. Thank you very much. Could you go back to this year? And I would ask maybe for some follow-up maybe information, if we have any type of historical information regarding permits issued and inspections completed, I might want to see that in conjunction with some of the other information we've asked for earlier. And if also, if there's anything about the type of permit or where it's located, I don't know if that's easy to do, that information I would find very valuable.
So when you say where, like geographically within the city?
Yes.
Okay. Let me see if our GIS guy can help with that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
Keith, in the department budget, there is about $1.6 million for professional services. Can you get a little breakdown on how much of that is for ongoing work and how much is focused on the 2020 projects? Just order of magnitude numbers is fine.
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I can provide that for you. So some of it is, some of it is wrapped up in these projects, and then some of it is, so the city right now uses consultants for staff services as well as for technical expertise that we do not have on staff. And so I can put those into those buckets for you if that would be helpful.
That would be great, and I don't need it, you know, right away, but before we start getting into deliberation, would be sure helpful to understand where that's going.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh.
I see that there is an increase to IT costs for permitting of $38,000 for 2020. What is that related to, considering you have fewer employees there?
So it's, the city uses a program called Track-It to basically create workflow for all the permit reviewers, and there's a significant upgrade to Track-It that's in process right now. And I think, believe that's, John's nodding his head, I believe that's what it is for, is to finish the upgrade to Track-It.
Thank you.
So I have a question around neighborhood engagement, and I should know the answer to this, and I don't. In which department does Lysin work?
Communications.
Communications, okay. So she is our, she had, a while ago, she's been with us for like three years now, maybe even four. Time flies when you're having fun. Three. So I, how does this neighborhood engagement effort, what you're describing, she had a plan three years ago to do sort of a deep dive into neighborhoods, and she was going to start with a pilot neighborhood, and I'm a little fuzzy as to how this sounds a lot like that, and I know that she's had a lot of things that have come up, sort of ad hoc things that have developed that she's needed to work on. It's not that she hasn't been busy, but is this really that same effort that we've been talking about for about three years, to do deep dives into the neighborhoods?
I know what this one is. I don't know what that one is, so I'm going to let Autumn respond.
So if you remember, with this position, it was, first approved, it was not full-time, but we added extra hours to make it a full-time position after, I believe, the first year, if memory serves me correct, with a priority focused on ensuring that we create better connections in ensuring people know what's going on development-wise in their neighborhood. And so Lysin does spend one day a week over in DSD in Public Works Engineering to educate herself about projects that are happening in the community, to help educate neighborhoods and what the impacts are going to be, or how they can get involved if there's still time and process to do that. So that's maybe what you're thinking of involving a connection with development. She, there was no priority as far as diving deep into one neighborhood as far as character that I recall.
Well, I think it was, okay, so maybe that's the answer to the question.
Okay.
It's the specific deep dive around neighborhood character, because there was, there was a number of things. She was going to sort of try to get the, you know, sort of start building amongst the whatever 20-some-odd, I don't remember the exact number of neighborhoods, but, you know, sort of building a portfolio, if you will, on each of the neighborhoods. It was a deep dive into one. So, but this is very specific around the questions having to do with character?
Yes.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions, DSD, before we move on? Nope.
I'm going to stay here. Okay.
Well, you should.
Economic development, so major duties for economic development are business retention. So this is really, you know, the, one of the most important things that we do. We do over 60 business retention visits every year, and what it is, is, you know, you visit a business, you talk to them about their business, the struggles that they're having, how it is to work with the city. You look for opportunities to provide some value add, and I can't say enough about doing the business retention visits. For business attraction, we have our Innovation Partnership Zone related to sports medicine. We are updating our webpage, and we had at least 15 prospects this year, and prospects are people that are truly interested in locating their business in the city. They're not just somebody, we get a lot of people fishing for locations, and those are suspects. They turn into a prospect when you have multiple conversations with them and you start to dial in on a location, kind of like what we did with Sequoia. We currently have a number of active prospects that we're working with, and most of them can't divulge. Sorry. Workforce development, we do an annual job fair. You know, we have somewhere around 150 people to come to our job fair, and we have over 40 booths of businesses that set up opportunities to talk with and hopefully find employees. You know, one of the things that was startling to me is after budget two weeks ago, I stopped by Taco Time on Gilman to get something to eat, and it was closed. And there was an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven-piece paper in the window that said, "Trouble with employees." So didn't know what that meant. So I asked Tim to stop by the next day at lunchtime, and they were open at lunch, and so he went in and talked to them, and they couldn't find employees to cover their dinner shift, so they just closed. So that's, that's a real problem, obviously, for a business that relies on lunch and dinner to close for one of your major shifts. So, so those are the, some of the issues that our local businesses are dealing with. So anyway, job fair, Startup 425, we just made a three-year commitment to continue with Startup 425. And then we partner with Chamber Commerce on Chamber U, which is basically, they bring in speakers to talk to entrepreneurs and small businesses on everything from finance to personnel to kind of other classes that are, that are helpful and... to personnel to kind of other classes that are, that are helpful and here locally. Property development, we're currently working with EFER on a North Fire Station location. And as you all know, we've been working on a transit-oriented development project over next to the Park and Ride. Tourism, another big thing that brings money into our community, AVP, the professional volleyball tournament. We've been working to help coordinate that for four years now. We support Visit Issaquah, which is our new DMO. Thank you all for establishing that. We think that that's adding value. And then we're in conversations right now about potentially bringing an Ironman to our community for next year. It's a huge thing. So all of that is kind of the major duties. So from a staffing standpoint, right now, there is a shared director between Development Services and Economic Development. We have two economic development managers and a specialist. The proposal for 2020 is to have one economic development manager and an economic development officer.
Councilmember Walsh, do you want to ask you a question now?
I might as well. It's on this page. So Keith, I would like to get more information about the success and kind of what happens with those business retention visits, how you choose which companies to go out to, whether you're seeing a selection of different company sizes and different areas, and then whether or not that turns into them reaching out and asking for help in areas, or if we're seeing closures. And then also, when looking at prospects historically, I'd like to see if we can look at the data on which ones fell through and why.
Yeah.
And see if there's anything there that perhaps we're not able to provide, you know, maybe they couldn't get the information on something they needed, and that would be something that we could fix. And I don't need this in terms of budget, but maybe when we're looking at services overall for next year.
Okay.
Just an early ask.
Super great. Okay. Okay. So for 2019, so, you know, communications and ED spent a lot of time, we spent one full day with 425 Magazine. And then we spent a number of follow-ups with them, kind of cultivating, I think, a relationship that resulted in a really good article featuring Issaquah that was in March. Down here is a photo of our IPZ Sports Medicine Committee. So we have a committee of local businesses that get together and talk about sports medicine. The Combine that we hosted at the state park this year generated this $1,000 donation to Issaquah High School. AVP talked about that. And then this is a page off the DMO Visit Issaquah site. So if you haven't been to their webpage yet, you should check it out. So for 2020, really focusing on the strategic plan items that were under economic vitality. So the first bullet point is enhance business attraction efforts. So develop an employer recruitment strategy, major employers, marketing, commercial space availability, leverage existing economic development activities. And then the second item, expand support for small business and startup training and development. We identified a business survey and enhanced the website with more data and highlight resources such as Startup 425.
Councilmember Ray.
So I was noting that in the budget, that you've eliminated the funding for the Sports Medicine Innovation Partnership Zone for the Sports Combine. And I noticed that the Sports Medicine is not prominently listed on 2020 projects. Is this something we're de-emphasizing going forward?
Not at all. So, so we have, you know, we have identified that sports medicine is a strong niche for our city, and we should continue to try and market and recruit to, you know, businesses that cater to that industry. I think because of the direction in the strategic plan, what we interpreted from that was that council was looking for us to go beyond the sports medicine niche. And so that's why it's not highlighted on this page. But it doesn't mean that we, or that they, aren't going to be also continuing, we just, so the IPZ has to be renewed with the State of Washington. That application was due this year, and we just filled it out and got re-renewed. And so we, by no means, we actually, there was, there was a strong positive feedback from the businesses that participated in the Combine. And so what we want to do is try and keep that momentum going, although there's not a funded activity for 2020 like there was this year. What we're trying to do is figure out what we can do, or if we can get the businesses to kind of pony up their own money to fund an event similar to the Combine, maybe at a smaller scale. So we're in, we're having those conversations right now. And the intent is not to walk away from sports medicine. It's to do it and.
So the desire is to do another Combine, but maybe on a different scale and with different funding sources?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Council Deputy President Bateese.
Thanks for the presentation tonight. I, just to tag on a little bit to Councilmember Ray's question with the IPZ, I'm hoping that with all the work that has been put into that, and because we're realigning the department with, and there's less staff, that we're not losing any of the momentum that we've already created and still have that marketed and are still making that, what is, you know, a big piece of what Issaquah is about, because we may lose momentum there if we don't. And wondering how with the 2020 work plan, how is the group going to be working with regional partners, specifically now that Greater Seattle Partners has really revamped everything, and they're a brand-new group doing new things? And how, how will the team be working with those regional economic development partners?
So it's a great question, and unfortunately, I can't answer it. And Jen would have been here, but she's at IEDC in Indianapolis right now. So I will make sure that she gets that question, and we'll get you a response back on that.
I think that with that new group forming, that it would be, they seem to be on a roll, and it'd be great to be a part of that, especially as we're trying to attract businesses here. And then just last quick question is, with the DMO, when will we get the next update so we can better understand with that newly developed group, what's happening with that?
Great question. You guys' dance card's a little full. You know, I'll talk to Beth, or I'll have Tim talk to Beth, and we'll get something on your calendar, hopefully before the end of the year, because I know that there are a few things that she would like to talk to you guys about.
So, under enhanced business attraction efforts, develop an employer recruitment strategy. What's that going to look like to the council?
Why don't you let me take a crack at that, because the program's moving to our offices. I think at the beginning of the year, I'd like to have a conversation with the council. I think that there's an opportunity to do a fairly substantial check-in with the council. I've heard this evening, there are certainly pieces that are working well that we want to continue to support. There are probably pieces that we either need to retool, re-enhance, or perhaps take a different approach with. So my hope is that the council will have some sort of planning retreat, planning meeting early in the year. And I would think that this is, the topic of economic development and direction will be a prime part of that.
Okay. Yeah, we're not the experts, right? Like, we've gone ahead and said, from a strategic plan point of view, what we'd like to see. I'm hoping that conversation is as much about, you know, we're not experts at getting major employers to come to Issaquah, right? You guys should be marshaling those resources. So I think it's fine to have further conversations with the council, but, I mean, there's a point where it's about expert, you know, technical expertise beyond what does the council want to see, because I think the strategic plan is, has, has some pretty good marching orders, I thought.
Well, and we need to operationalize it. And so I think my goal would be to come back and share with you what our initial thoughts are, moving forward in the new year with that, and get your feedback with it. I think we have, as we, as has been demonstrated, you know, we're having more finite resources dealing with economic development. We want to be more focused in our efforts to make those resources go as far as we can.
Okay. And then what does leverage existing ED activities mean in this context? It seems to say, we'll do the things that we do.
Oh, I don't think, I think what it says is that we've had some successes, let's continue to build on those successes. Something else was mentioned earlier, you know, sometimes it's easy to take kind of a scattershot approach. I think it was on the communications and neighborhood outreach. You know, we need to be much more precise with that. I think, as Keith has mentioned, we've had some good successes. Let's build on those good successes. Let's try to focus our resources on those good successes and have some real specific targets. Economic development's a huge topic. I mean, as you see, we've, we've had broad brushes in the past. I think now we need to be as strategic as possible, looking where we can build on successes. I think the regional piece is very important. We are certainly not in a vacuum. Businesses that are making location decisions, no one's coming and saying, "We just want to come to Issaquah." They may say, "We want to be in the Seattle area." They may say, "We want to be on the east side of the Seattle area." But we need to demonstrate what makes sense. But we also have to marry it with the realities of what, what resources there are for teneting, what support we can provide. You will hear from me as we talk more about economic development. I believe the number-one tool for economic development is love. You know, we need to demonstrate why we think that business should be here versus having them located in another community. I think Keith's done a great job over the years expressing love. And I think from what little I understand of Issaquah's successes, I think, you know, demonstrating that we really want a company like Costco to devote, you know, I think it was what, tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars over an extended period to this community, when they probably could have gone sort of anywhere in the area, if not anywhere in the country, show, we have to show that we really want those businesses here. So my hope is all that's part of a January conversation.
Okay. Love is awesome. I think land is the other big L-word, because I, you know, for years, your predecessor and others in staff have heard, I always gave Valve as my, Valve Software is like my poster child of the kind of company that I'd love to have come here. And it turns out, they moved a year and a half ago to a new location in Bellevue and actually looked at Issaquah, right? And they just couldn't find anything that fit their needs. But they were really interested in Issaquah, and in the end, had to wind up in Bellevue. And so that, to me, like, amen to like love, I get it, attention, CEO-level attention, all that kind of stuff. But in the end, we have to, we have to figure out what these companies need and why they, so many of them, take a powder when they, when they look at Issaquah. And that leveraging ED successes, great. I just submit that leverage existing ED activities doesn't say what you just said. So just think about that. Other questions on this topic? All right. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Rather than talking about other people's budgets, I get to talk about my own budget tonight. So an overview, we are, have just over 15 employees in the Finance Department, hard-working, dedicated employees that are working on budget development and monitoring, which is what you all see the most from us. Financial reporting, the new administration, including utility billing and BNO tax administration, procurement and accounts payable, and payroll. In terms of our 2019 accomplishment, we produced a six-year CIP and an operating budget that I believe has greater transparency than in past years, and hoping to build on that in the future. But this was our first attempt at that. We are in the process of implementing the Munis Utility Billing Module. This has been a number of years in the making. This work has been actively underway in 2019, and we are scheduled to go live with the system next spring, approximately next March. We also launched a comprehensive review of the city's finances and financial management practices. I was here in April talking about some of the initial findings. That work is continuing actively. We have engaged the services of the Government Finance Officers Association to help us understand our processes and procedures, map those out. And those discussions have been productive, and I will pivot in the next slide to talk about what that means for 2020. And then the Finance Department was also actively involved in developing the finance plan to allow the city to procure the Bergsma Open Space property. In terms of what we are doing for 2020, we are, as I mentioned, going to go live with utility billing. This will allow people to make online payments for their utility bills, which will be a big service improvement. It will also integrate, better integrate and eliminate some manual processes in terms of collecting those revenues and tying them into Munis. Right now, they're done in a separate system. We are also, a major work plan item for us in 2020 is the Munis Re-implementation Project. As you all know, Munis was first implemented as the city's ERP, Financial Management System in 2015. And it has been, it has caused challenges ever since. It is, we evaluated what happened, and not to spend too much time dwelling on the past, but it was not implemented the way it should have been implemented. The city did not take the time and invest the resources that were required to do process mapping, procedure mapping. So you have a lot of inconsistent practices around the city. You've got use of side systems around the city, a lot of manual processes, and it is extraordinarily difficult to get financial information. Sometimes it feels like we're doing our job with our hand tied behind our back. Things take far longer than they should. Preparing a financial forecast is, is a many-week, month process. It should not be that difficult. So we are recommending there is money in the budget to do this Munis re-implementation. And the goal is to not repeat the mistakes of last time and to do, to engage the services of a project manager with experience in implementing ERPs, to do that process mapping, to eliminate, reduce the use of side systems, so it's all funneling through the Munis program so that we have access to the data that we need to provide you the information that you need, the information that I need to do my job, and do it more efficiently.
Councilmember Wintersstein.
Thank you for that review of Munis. He didn't, I could have waited for the rest of the bullets, but that's okay. So you gave us a rundown, kind of in broad terms, of the effect of the current implementation and your hopes for improvements with the re-implementation. What, you know, maybe I need to go back and kind of reformulate my question here, because I was trying to listen to you and thinking, I had a question before it started. So let me, let me give back the floor.
Councilmember Walsh.
So this financial situation has certainly been something that the community has noticed. And so to highlight this budget, would you say it's putting our money where we've heard concern and where we've seen issues? And so this represents financial investments toward addressing those issues?
Yeah, I think, in my estimation, in my, and this is my 365th day with the city of Issaquah. I showed up here on October 15th, the day the budget was transmitted last year. So we transmitted the budget three weeks earlier this year. So in my, in my vast 365 days with the city of Issaquah, what, what I have observed is there was an effort to implement the ERP, Munis. And there was, there was an interest in conserving costs. And there was, there was an interest in conserving costs. I think there, it was an ambitious plan. There was a thought that things could be done in-house.
And this was years ago.
This was years ago. This was before most of the people, all of the people actively evolved, you know, new finance team, new IT team, new city administrator. So there, you know, there, there appeared to be an effort to sort of say, okay, we could do this on our own. And this is frankly not an uncommon, what the city of Issaquah is experiencing is not necessarily an uncommon problem. People attempt to do an ERP, cut corners, and you get something that's not working properly. And what I think happened over the years in, you know, in talking to people is there was like, okay, well, we've, we've gone this far, let's try and make it work. And a number of efforts to, you know, try and make it work, jerry-rig, you know, the system. And it wasn't and it hasn't. And I don't believe we are in a position where we can try and, you know, duct tape this together. It is just not working. And the longer it takes us to fix the problem, the harder it is to do our jobs. You know, preparing our annual financial statements is a tremendous lift. It should not be that difficult. Monthly bank reconciliations are extremely difficult. There are, there are systems to do that in an automated capacity. We don't have that capability. And so it really does feel like hand tied behind the back. All of our, all of our steps take a long time. There is a question that may have actually come from you, Councilmember Walsh, maybe someone else, about how much we have spent on Munis since, okay, it was, I think this is the second time I attributed a council president question to you.
Ask a lot of questions.
Anyway, the answer is, and we'll get a written response to you by the end of the week, $1.4 million. That was a bear to uncover. To get that answer was not an easy thing to answer. We aren't using project ledger, so when we're starting a new project, we're not entering it into the system and can see what those costs are over time. It was a manual lookup process to identify the costs that we have spent on this project. And so I was joking with my staff, I'm like, the difficulty in answering that question is kind of a case in point of the problems that we are having. And I recognize that the city has invested a lot of money thus far and that you're probably like, eh, why should we believe it this time? And all's I could say is there's a new team here, the team recognizes what the problems were, the team is, is committed to not replicating those problems. And we just, I mean, and some of this is like a plea of like, we just can't keep doing business this way. We've, we've got to be doing better. And, you know, the end product will hopefully be, you know, easier access to information, you know, an ability to see our financial position much earlier than what we are able to do right now. And, you know, I need that to do my job. City Administrator Bob Kowitsz needs that to do his job. You all need that to do your job. And frankly, the citizens expect that kind of information as well.
Councilmember Rick.
So we're going to stick on Munis for a while. It is the single biggest discretionary item we have in the budget, as best I can tell. So it probably does deserve a fair amount of attention. First, thank you for the last 365 days, to you and your team, for all that you've accomplished in the last 365 days. We are in a far, far better spot than we were before. So two questions for you, take them in any order you want. First question is, when will we have the reimplementation of Munis complete? And number two, actually a three-parter. Number two is, is the utility billing part of Munis and is this part of the reimplementation? And then three, are there any things that you can point to or would like to highlight that will give us confidence that this reimplementation is going to be smooth and we won't be having this conversation in a couple of years?
Okay, so first was question, and I may have to come back to you to repeat the questions, but I'll take one at a time. So the first question was timeline.
When are we going to be done?
Yeah. So I can't give you a solid answer of when we are going to be done, but I can tell you what comes next and what it means for then the follow-up steps. So GFOA has been onsite on numerous occasions throughout the summer and even up, they were here, I believe, last week, meeting with subject matter experts, both within finance and also users within the department, to do the process mapping. They are expecting to have an action plan ready for me within the next month. That action plan will formulate the ask, the discussions with Tyler Technologies, who is the purveyor of Munis, to develop an implementation plan. We, I have been having conversations with GFOA and with John, and John has had conversations with GFOA about how we sequence the project. And they're talking about doing the more transactional items first. So, you know, your project ledger, your purchasing module, things of that nature first that are foundational. And then some of the things that are going to take a little bit longer to implement, like capital asset, the capital asset module, that would be on a longer time horizon. But we're envisioning something happening over a two-year span with some things going live earlier than others. I can't right now tell you specific dates because we're just not there in the process. But the idea is to have a first phase ready, assuming that Tyler has the resources to devote to this in 2020 so that we can go live, starting in 2021 with, with some of these modules. So that's, that's a timing question. In terms of updates, you know, would be happy to come back to the council at periodic intervals to give you updates on where we are with those efforts. Because, you know, there, there is, you know, a leap of faith that you are providing as we are having those discussions. But I want to assure you that this is a high priority. The team is committed to it. When GFOA has been onsite, some finance staff that were here through the implementation were raving about the sessions with GFOA and the process mapping of why didn't we do this the first time around? They were getting, you know, insights into system capabilities that they didn't know existed because those discussions didn't happen that time around. So, you know, a lot of times you go through a major change like this and people are freaking out about it. That is not the case within the finance department because there is such a recognition that, of the difficulties that we are having with the current system.
Second question, notice that you're implementing utility billing. Is that part of Munis and will we have to re-implement that as part of reavowing Munis?
It is part of Munis and we will not have to re-implement it. We, lessons learned, and actually this is probably a good example of how we have, and we haven't, we haven't gone live with it yet, but we have taken the steps that we needed to, to be very deliberative on the front end. And one of the things, and John, correct me if I'm wrong about this, I don't believe when we went live with Munis, we did a parallel system with, with the two of them. So we didn't even do that testing. We are doing that with utility billing. When it goes live, I think in the next couple of months, we're going to be running Eden, which is our current utility system, and Munis, parallel to test it out so that we ensure that we can work out the bugs. So that's an example of, yes, it's Munis, we've, we've learned our lessons, we are applying those lessons and do not expect to have to re-implement the utility billing component of Munis with this effort.
And I think you, in the course of those two questions, I think you answered the third, which is, why are we going to be successful this time?
So, so tell me again the timeline for having the Munis implementation plan.
We're expecting an action plan from GFOA within the next month. And then that will form the foundation for having discussions with Tyler about an implementation plan and an implementation schedule. And the intention is to have GFOA help us with those discussions. They are a national presence. They have helped cities across the US implement ERPs, including Munis. They have clout with Tyler Technologies and they will be part of those discussions with us. They also, and I can't, I can only talk about this conceptually right now, but among the things that they're looking at is, are there also opportunities to negotiate with Tyler about services that may not have been delivered up to expectations with the original implementation? And might we be able to get some concessions from Tyler on, on the reimplementation plan?
Okay. So, because I spent my first decade in software and it concerns me, it sounds like we're saying our implementation is going to require the software vendor to do things. And this Munis was, I think, sold as, you know, they know what they're doing and this is a, this is a, you know, tool that's well established in the industry. And it's really concerning that it sounds like it may be gated on, I don't know, bug fixes or improvements or whatever from, Tyler's the software vendor?
Tyler's the software vendor, but it's not, it's not bugs. It's, it's, we didn't, we, working with Tyler, didn't design the system to, to, the system was not deployed to meet our needs. And we also, you know, one of the things, as I'm sure you know from your career in, in software, is that organizations often need to change their processes to conform with the configuration of the software, not try and get the software to work around their processes.
Right.
We did the latter. So we're, we didn't change our processes. And as a result, we're not maximizing the use of the software. We're using a bunch of side systems to maintain data, which is creating extra steps. So this is less of a situation with bugs in the software and just a miss on the implementation.
Then what do we need from Tyler? Because GFOA would do the implementation?
No, GFOA will not. Tyler will do the implementation.
GFOA is just advising us?
Correct.
And it's Tyler's, it's Tyler's technical implementation folks?
Correct.
Okay. This is, this is all leading to, in my day job, I don't give people money or staff without an implementation plan, like zero. And so it's concerning that we don't have an implementation plan in place for this, as Councilmember Ray mentions, the largest discretionary item in the budget. So is there, I don't like this question, is there any way that we can gate some of our spend on having an implementation plan in place? It really, really concerns me to move forward. And I, and I believe that you've now got, you're putting the right focus on it, everything, but just to have such a large thing without having an implementation plan in place feels wrong.
So I hear where you're coming from and this is a little bit of a chicken and egg issue. It's also a budget timing issue of, you know, we've got a budget before you now while we're still developing the plan. The costs, the costs that we have put forward, we have consulted with Tyler on and those are estimates. One of the things that I don't know that the city of Issaquah has done with something like this, but I've seen it done in other jurisdictions, is, you know, the money is allocated, but then there are restrictions. King County calls them provisos, where it's like, okay, we're going to allocate the money, but you got to come back and you've got to report on these milestones. That might be something the council wants to consider as part of the budget process is make me come back. I mean, I will come back voluntarily, but, you know, make me come back and, and, you know, potentially release of funds, you know, could be tied to that. You know, I guess I would, I would hate, I hear what you're saying in terms of, you know, this is a little, a leap of faith.
I tend to.
But it's not, you know, I would hope, and this is not my decision to make, that the money wouldn't be reallocated to something else.
No.
And so, you know, it's how do we have that, that back and forth so that you can have confidence, understand what you are getting for this investment before we, you know, launch into next steps?
It's like City Administrator Bob Kowitsz, what, has some thoughts?
Well, I think it's important to delineate the roles here between GFOA and Tyler. So GFOA is helping us come up with what an appropriate implementation plan would look like, is helping as, in essence, our agent, working with Tyler to take the implementation plan, getting their response to that, and then jointly working together on implementation plan. So I think, as Director Goldberg has said, it'd be very appropriate for us, once we've gotten the information from GFOA, once we've gone back to Tyler, gotten their response, to come back to the council and say, this is what we have not only developed with GFOA's help, but this is the response from Tyler. There are some contracting issues here, which I'm not sure this is the best venue to get involved in. But we also need to get, we also need to work through those. So I think we are entering a phase now where we will have recommendations from GFOA on implementation, will be able to go to Tyler, raise those issues along with any other outstanding issues we have from the previous one, and come up with a package, which we then can bring back to the council, which would delineate specifically the costs associated with the Tyler portion of this. Is that fairly well?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So what's the total ask in 2020 again?
One...
So there's, in the IT budget, there's just over a million. And then in the finance department budget, there's $200,000 to help with training and if we need backfill of staff and things of that nature.
So my request, and it's wearing my one-of-seven hat, it's not wearing my council president hat, would be that we would look at that 1.2, put the 1.2 number in there. But my request would be, is there a milestone that we can put in there somewhere that's, and that says, you know, we would release 300,000 of it initially, we've got a milestone, when that milestone is achieved, do the other 900. I don't know what that looks like, but that's my request as one of them.
And I think from administration's standpoint, that's perfectly reasonable. Give us some latitude to get the information back from GFOA. And then we'll be able to give an update report, probably in general terms, by the end of the calendar year. And then if we need to come back, my sense is also there will either be a new contract with Tyler or an amended contract with Tyler. So that would likely be the mechanism before the city council, that we would then have those, those milestones or, you know, progress payments, as the case may be.
But would we be able to talk about some sort of milestone as part of the budget process? In other words, not just say, here's, here's a check for 1.2 million and, and let us know how it's going?
Well, I think it's also procurement issue, that we would, we would not be able to enter into a contract the size that we're, we're discussing without council approval.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
So I think the budget's there, but we'll have to come back to you with a contract revised with Tyler and in, even if we didn't, we will.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I mean, I think once we get the action plan and understand the scope of that, I think that would be an appropriate time to come back to the council, to just share with you where we are. It would be in advance of procurement, but then, you know, we can take input from you and then have those discussions with Tyler and then the next.
We'll do a two-phase process. We'll hopefully get information to you by the end of the year with what we believe the, the action plan would be. And then as we talk with Tyler, come back with the provisions of the contract or a new contract. I don't even think we have determined that at this point.
Got it. Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. So I, I learned a lot by this and I, that includes that we don't expect the full scope to be completed in calendar year 2020. It would help for budget, and that last conversation about, you know, you'd have to council approval for a contract anyway, some known dollar amount, it was very helpful as well. So I'm going to look at these, but this budget right now is, that's a plug number. So what, I would like to know what the assumptions are behind that plug number. So you, you did some rough estimate. So I heard earlier you talked about, hey, we have to re-implement purchasing, we're going to do project accounting. You talked about something else that was a little bit further out. But so clearly there's, a lot of times they count these by modules. We're going to do this implementation, we're going to do this integration. So what is your plan that maybe helped drove this plug number? Because if we're going to, we still, you're asking us to approve a budgetary number, we know we're going to revisit it. I'd just like to know what's making up this budgetary number.
Yes. So there, we can break this down into several component parts. I don't have all of the information with me and I also don't know that. So I, what I, what I would like to do and what we're preparing to do, in fact, that's one of the things I've been working on during the other presentations, is a written response that we can have for you by the end of the week with the component parts and the various estimates and how we arrived at those estimates.
Okay. And I'm going to make one special request in this. Earlier this evening, you character, you said one of the drivers with this is to have easier access to information. I just wonder if you could just expand... And I just wonder if you could just expand upon that a little bit. So, that would be helpful, as, as part of the reply. Point about the budget document itself, we're talking about capital improvement project, TC 010. On page 120, the value is listed as $1,043,500. On page 104, that same project is listed at $860,886.
Yeah. So, the, the total project is, for 2020, is that 1,0043 number. The 846 or eight, whatever.
Eight sixty.
On, I can't remember what page, is the amount on REIT, the remaining amount, is cost allocated to the utilities.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Do we expect, then, that we will be allocating more money for the continued implementation beyond 2020?
Yeah. So, the CIP had just over 500,000 for the 2021, splitting the work up. So, there would be an additional amount that we anticipate for 2021, and then would anticipate that it would be fully implemented by that point.
Okay. So, then after that, no more money in the CIP?
Yeah, no more money in the CIP beyond 2021.
Okay. And then, I just wanted to second that I think it would be helpful to have updates if it's before the contract, if, if that's at a milestone. I think that this is a big public trust issue, and so transparency about what we're doing to correct our financial situation is really important, and it's important to be straightforward and also to, I think, keep coming back with the message that we're making progress. So, I would like to see that report.
And Council President, if I could just ask Beth or John a question, there's an annual license fee.
There is an annual license fee. Is it, I believe it's $168,000, $168,000 is the annual subscription fee.
So, that is what you will continue to see? And yes, it's a racket.
Is that on top of the 500,000?
It is.
Good.
And that's not a capital expense, that's an operating expense. So, that's why you're not seeing it in the CIP. And those are expenses we're already incurring.
Other questions for Director Goldberg?
So, I have a couple more items on there, and I'll do it super fast. So, we, we will be facilitating a bond sale in support of the CIP in early 2020. We will also be supporting the city's effort to build a transportation funding ballot measure in 2020, and then supporting the citywide service assessment that we have been talking about throughout this process.
Other questions? Oh, so I just, I want to take the temperature of the council for a second. We are an hour and 38 minutes in. We are on track right now to be about four hours and 20 minutes. There's probably not another Munis conversation lurking out there, although there might be. What I'd like to do is, although this was originally estimated at a three-hour meeting, what I'd like to do is plan on going four. If we go longer than four, have a conversation with you all about whether we want to continue or whether we want to, let me just say, continue this evening or consider, continue another time. But what I'd like to do right now is say, try to get done inside a four-hour window, but I just want to make sure that everybody else is amenable to that. All right. Councilmember Goodman?
You're thinking, what is it, seven to?
Seven to 11.
Eleven?
Well, that's right now, our pace. I mean, like I said, Munis may have skewed that pace, let's hope. But anyhow, that's, that's where we're at now, right now. So, I won't plan on stopping at three hours, but we'll, let's try to hold this to four, also for staff, if possible, since people are staying later. And with that, Human Resources.
Good evening. Thank you. So, again, Stephanie Johnson with Human Resources. HR supports the work culture through collaboration and a variety of programmatic responsibilities. We're a small department of four. We have a current HR director vacancy, and we also have three analysts, of which I'm one. Our oversight in the department includes citywide staffing and recruitment. We are the staff liaison to the Civil Service Commission. We manage the city's classification and compensation plan. We work with our four labor groups through employee and labor relations. We manage our comprehensive benefits administration package. We coordinate and conduct training and organizational development. We oversee the performance management system, and we administer safety and workers' compensation claims. Certainly, all the work that we do is at a foundation of legal compliance and employment law. Some of our 2019 accomplishments include implementing NeoGov or governmentjobs.com, an applicant tracking software to attract qualified candidates and expose ourselves greater in the labor market. We've recruited for 28 regular positions this year so far. I think some of you have been involved in some of those, certainly the city administrator recruitment, finance director, deputy city administrator, and a host of other positions that make up our great staff. We have certainly more positions than that that we're working on. Those are our filled positions. I think there was a council question recently about the number of open recruitments. We'll get a response back to that somewhere around 16 to 20 with freezes that we've talked about in previous budget presentations. Earlier this evening, we talked about working with the executive office to implement the first phase of improvements to the Employee Experience Plan. That work was an innovative strategy to enhance the way that we manage the performance of individuals through the check-in process instead of kind of the universally hated annual performance review. In 2020, we have projects that are continuing, certainly working with the Employee Experience Team to implement, implement, excuse me, the additional phases of improvements to that Employee Experience Plan. One of our focuses will be fostering development and aligning staff to organizational goals. It's part of a strategic plan item as well, I should notate. We've started in 2019 to negotiate successor agreements with three of our groups that have expiring contracts at the end of this year, Teamsters, our Police Officers Association, and the Administrative Staff Association. Our work plan also includes a plan to update a number of policy documents. As you can see, we have a number of resources. Our goal in 2020 will be to be an overhaul and streamline and update and look for uniformity and ease where we can. We will continue to implement recommendations of the citywide class and comp study. You've certainly seen a few of those items that we've been working on in 2019 in the 2020 budget proposals. I think we have said all along that Human Resources has a commitment to looking at additional total compensation items such as benefits in 2020. And then certainly, we're always looking for ways to collaborate with our bargaining units to develop and implement improved labor management processes.
So, I'm sorry, these slides aren't in the tonight's packet, are they?
They aren't, and I apologize. We actually recognized that just earlier this evening, so we added them in at the last minute, and so we can certainly make sure we get those and post those online. Apologize for that, that was just an administrative oversight.
Because I just pulled the packet again from the website, it's not there.
Correct. We just, in the five o'clock hour, we put it up here on the screen, but we'll certainly refresh and make them available.
You mentioned earlier, as part of employee development, retention as a goal. Do we have a retention target? And do we know how we're doing against that target?
You know, we don't have an established target. It's something that, you know, organizationally, we've wanted to look at, succession planning and other things as a part of that as well. We've looked a little bit at some metric. We don't have that establishment, but certainly, you know, that's something overall, just staffing-wise, that we've, we've had a goal to get to.
Questions? Oh, Council Deputy President Patisse.
Thank you for the presentation tonight. So, could you go back just to about, yeah, the employee, I guess, experience? So, this is, in 2020, you'll be working on a second phase. So, is that, are there different phases? How many phases are there? Obviously, that's probably something that's ongoing, but is this, can you speak a little bit more to that?
Sure. So, the first work that we did with the Employee Experience Plan was to survey our staff for the employee experience that they wanted. And best practices showed that, I think of it as a triangle, I think of a metric, that when you align employees to the strategic plan, you reward and recognize and you develop them, that's the sweet spot of their employee experience. And that's what we heard from our staff. So, the first phase of work that we did was to figure out those design principles and then build upon that. So, we had a consultant, we had a consultant in that did some original work with us. We then moved to the check-in model. Our next phase is developing staff, because they wanted part of their sweet spot to be developed. And so, one of the things that we're looking at is enhancing our citywide training in 2020 to meet that focus goal of developing staff, which is what we heard from them. Other phases, you know, certainly, like you said, continuous process improvement, to do things like the all-city meetings, and we heard from staff that they wanted to connect, and they wanted to have fun, and they wanted to get frequent feedback. And so, all of those things combined have been part of our phases, but certainly, the next one, which will be a great focus for us in 2020, is building out that development for them.
And so, that is where, to Council President Mart's question, in terms of retention, turnover, and future metrics around all of that, that, is that part of, is that sort of the end of that process or in a different bucket?
You know, I certainly think it's something that we could focus on. I mentioned that one of our 2019 accomplishments was instituting NeoGov. One of the things that we haven't had great metric around is retention and recruitment and staffing and succession. And so, I think that could be a future goal for us. And certainly, I think it was Councilmember Ray asked, you know, how do you measure that, whether it be through retention or employee engagement? I think that should definitely be, you know, one of the strategies that HR should work towards. We can certainly look at that for 2020.
Thank you.
Any other questions in regards to HR? Nope. All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to IT.
Okay. John Traeger, IT Department. So, a department overview here, we have 10 and a half employees. We have applications to support all 11 departments with about 20 lines of business. There's 96 apps supported and at least one major application in each line of business. We also do the cybersecurity configuration monitoring and end-user training. We have about 230 help desk tickets a month. We maintain and manage 70 servers and a couple data centers, about 300 laptops or desktops, and 95 smartphones, and 50 other mobile broadband devices, as well as networks in four separate office facility buildings, and nine smaller office buildings, and a wide range of remote sites. So, in 2019, we did the vendor selection and have kicked off the customer request management, or soon-to-be renamed, project for CRM. So, that's in motion right now, we're working with the vendor. The council chambers upgrade is coming here soon, in a couple of weeks. The major cybersecurity systems hardening and end-user training initiatives have been going on all year, and we're making some significant gains in both security and usability in the network. We did a full backup system upgrade and set up cloud backup this year. And we also did the Questka budget system implementation, and it was used by all the departments this year for budget session, so it went pretty well. 2020 projects, first one, I think we already discussed, which is the financial management system, that's Munis. We're also going to configure GIS mapping and 3D software and conduct user training, and this is related to the strategic plan. And this is to do visualization of new major developments, and you could do the, basically a fly-through simulation of what it would look like and get a better feel for the scale of the buildings. We'll also go live with the utility billing, which will be in March. And then we're also looking at installing key card access and security cameras in some key buildings, and upgrading the mobile software for the Public Works Op Work Order System.
Councilmember Walsh?
I noticed you said on the first slide, 96 apps supported, at least one major app in each line of business. I'd just like to get a sense, as an email response, maybe what those are, what the costs, the operation costs, and also, you know, which ones maybe have more IT maintenance and time that's provided to them? Perhaps that's something more for our critical services review. I'm not sure on timing on that, but I'd like to get a sense of what those costs are, because that can be an area where a department is making a decision and IT then has to support, and the costs may not be justified in that way.
Okay. We can definitely put that together for you. I mean, we've been trying to move towards software as a service and away from having to support a lot of servers, and we went from four racks of servers to one. So, we've made some pretty significant progress, but you still have to pay a software vendor somewhere to host it. So, it's a trade-off, but it does, is a considerable labor savings for us.
I have a question. Have we looked at, in our emergency preparedness plans as a city, have we looked at, how have we addressed hardening of our IT systems? I look at the install key card access, and I just naturally think, yeah, and then when the power goes out, what do you do then? So, those sorts of questions around emergency response plan and IT.
We've done quite a bit of work on that. So, we, we only had one internet provider, and now we have two. We also have a satellite dish, and we have a communications trailer that can be set up anywhere in the city that could then link us up to our software that's in the cloud. And what's the other part of the question? It was network hardening?
I was asking about key, key card.
Key cards.
As an example, just, you know, it was just an example, but that you have plans.
So, yes, and there's always, some key staff will still have metal keys as a failover, but, because they're not maglocked, so you'll still be able to open the door with a key. But instead of having everybody have master keys, we'll have key cards and move to a much more secure and easier to manage system, especially for vendors and that kind of thing.
All right. This subject has just been much on my mind, because I've been reading about PG&E's problems this last week with their emergency response, and boy, oh, boy, let's not hire their consultants.
Good idea.
All right. Other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Ray?
Just a couple. John, so you mentioned migrating to software as a service where appropriate, and yet we've got $90,000 in the budget for a server refresh. Would it be possible to reduce the amount of money we're spending on new hardware and become more aggressive in terms of our migration to cloud-based computing?
We're looking at that, but this is the end of the last of the old servers. So, then, you know, as we've been doing more cloud and consolidating servers onto single hosts, this is kind of the last big round, as, as far as we can tell. Because, you know, we're trying to move storage to the cloud, but then there's a cost associated with that, too.
Right. So, this is the last Munis question I will ask. Does Munis have a software as a service option?
That is what we're using.
It is?
Yeah. So, but it's, it depends on your definition of what that is. So, it's really a single instance that they are hosting for us in the cloud.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions in regards to IT? Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having the court here tonight. My name is Kristy Shorn, and I started as court administrator in mid-April of this year. I promised to make this presentation brief. I promised to make this presentation brief. The court has an amazing team of five full-time and three part-time city employees totaling 6.75 positions, including Judge Scott Stewart, Issaquah's judge of 11 years, in the audience with us this evening. We serve the citizens of Issaquah, Snoqualmie, and North Bend. The court has one probation officer and 2/3 of a judicial specialist position allocated to providing resources, drug testing, supervision, and counseling to approximately 238 individuals annually. We have been busy. In 2018, the court processed a record-breaking 15,960 cases, a 51% increase in total filings since 2015 while maintaining staffing levels. This graph right here shows our caseload volumes by year and case type. And note that all the case types across the board have increases of double-digit percentages. Criminal traffic alone was up 167%. What have we been doing and what are our accomplishments in 2019? In response to budget pressures and to a nationwide drug epidemic, we transitioned this month to a new drug testing laboratory. The new lab allows probation to customize testing, use software to manage the program, and reduce our costs per test. Next, we implemented a collection amnesty program. The program has already shown success in helping citizens get their driving privileges reinstated and to reduce outstanding collection debt. In July, we reorganized our jury call-in system. The improved communication has allowed us to reduce the number of citizens we ask to serve on jury duty and has reduced jury costs. Not on our slide tonight, but we also completed video court, and I believe the police department will be talking about this further this evening. What's next for the court in 2020? In collaboration with IT, we will be implementing two exciting technology programs. The programs will allow the court to reach its goal to become paperless and significantly reduce our supply costs. The court will actually be one of the first departments to go live with the citywide electronic content management program. We will convert thousands of court files into an electronic format and use workflows to automate our records management. The program allows to provide stakeholders and citizens with on-demand access to our court documents. In the first quarter of 2020, we will also implement OCourt. OCourt is a web-based document and calendaring solution for courts of limited jurisdiction. The software allows all court users to access court forms from any electronic device. The program increases efficiency of court staff time and has been successful, successfully implemented in 12 other municipal courts in our region. And later in 2020, we will also explore ways to create a community court in 2021. Community court is an alternative to traditional sentencing for low-level, nonviolent offenders. Participants in the program are provided access to resources to help act them back into the community and reduce reoffense rates. And that's what we've been doing.
Questions? Councilmember Goodman.
Thanks. I just, welcome.
Thank you.
The, under enterprise doc, our content management, finding on-demand access to court documents, is that an internal or is that a?
It will start internally in our first phase. But yes, right now, if we get a records request, we can spend hours searching and compiling all the data. This will allow the clerks, in a matter of seconds, to come up with the documents. In the second phase, we would like to take it online, and as we implement it, we'll be building it for what's public record and what's not in the, on the legal side.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you for the information. I wondered what percentage approximately of the cases are, of the effort is Issaquah versus the other cities that are served.
Yeah. So, about 63% of our case filings are photo enforcement. Out of those, another 25% are from the, are nonphoto from Issaquah, and 12% of our filings are from North Bend and Snoqualmie.
Okay. So, 60% is?
63% are photo enforcement, and then the other 25% from Issaquah are nonphoto, so infractions and criminal sightings. And then, 12% of our total filings are from North Bend and Snoqualmie.
Okay. Thank you. And then, the other thing which I had, I didn't ask you, but I had asked our administration is I'm interested to know what the, what the revenue is for contracts for other services. So, I don't know if you know that, but it's something I'm interested in.
Yeah. I can tell you what our filing fees are, the revenues we receive from filing fees. There are additional monies that we transfer over for probation costs. But in, I have it here, in 2018, Snoqualmie and North Bend, we received $302,000 in filing fees.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. Earlier today, we talked about electronic records management that the clerk was doing, and now I see enterprise content management. Is this the same thing?
It's the same thing, yes. Everybody calls it, sometimes it's called document storage solution.
Cool. Because now I don't have to wonder where the money is.
Yeah.
Wally helped me with that, all right. And then, OCourt, how is that different? What does that do?
So, OCourt, so, the electronic content management is your storage. It's your electronic storage. But in order to, what makes this system so much better is if you also have your court forms in electronic format that you then archive into the storage solution. So, OCourt allows us to put all of our court forms in an electronic format, and we have about 70 forms that we'll be putting in.
And where's the funding for that in your budget? Because I don't see a lot of?
It came out of the court's IT funding.
Okay. And then, finally, this is because you get to educate me here. So, on fines that we collect on various things, where's that money go?
It, most of it goes into the general fund. Photo enfor, with the exception of photo enforcement.
Goes into that special traffic safety fund.
Correct.
So, do we know how much money we collect from municipal court in terms of fees?
We do. So, and we collected in 2018, 1.52 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Walsh.
So, with the idea of implementing the enterprise content management and OCourt, will those be things that will also serve North Bend and Snoqualmie, or is it?
Correct, they will.
Okay. And so, are those communities also sharing in the costs of those implementations?
I know in 2018, I think in lieu of doing this, we did raise our costs for Snoqualmie and North Bend, our case filings. If you look at our case, their filing fees in 2018 combined were 302,000. In 2017, they were 189,000. So, we were ramping up to go electronic. But I know that's something that administration wants to look at as well.
Okay. And then, I'd also like to understand what our cost recovery is on those that's kind of involved in that contract. And so, I don't know whether that's, again, part of this budget or part of our evaluation of services next year.
I know, Andrea, and I had spoken about that, and it's in our plan to unravel.
For next year's?
For next year's.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Winterstadt.
I have a hopefully easy admin request.
Good.
I know that the document, this presentation is going to be upgraded online. We're going to get the HR. In your second bullet, if instead of electronic documents, it actually said court forms, implement web-based court forms, your answer actually made that understandable.
Okay.
So, that would be handy just for historical purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it. And not that, not that we should view this as our criteria for success, but we have moved from 3.3 minutes per slide to 2.9 minutes per slide, and as a result, we are, we are projecting to be through the slides by about 10:45. Present. No pressure.
I'll try and see if I can help with your average slide.
It's not, I mean, we, I'm just, again, I'm not trying to race through anything. I just, you know, want people to understand our trajectory.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Perhaps in my Midwestern passive-aggressive way.
David Fujimoto, Sustainability Director, here to talk about the Office of Sustainability Budget and Work Program for 2020. Just as a quick overview, our department includes a staff of five, and for 2020, we had a .5 part-time position that we are anticipating discontinuing for next year. Generally speaking, for our department, our work falls into three different buckets, if you will. One is related to environmental policy, programs, and services. And this slide talks about kind of the different topics, if you will, that we work on in each of these different areas to give you a sense of kind of the things that we're doing. So, again, environmental policy programs and services. Also notable within that is our solid waste and recycling collection services. We provide services to about 9,000 residents, just under 500 businesses, and about 150, 200 multifamily complexes here in town as well. We offer a range of programs to, a lot of times, address kind of the demand management side of the equation, if you will, for kind of managing transportation or water use efficiency, pollution prevention, kind of that upstream kinds of measures that are oriented more towards kind of containment and reduction. Also notable in there is climate, which perhaps is a little bit more overarching and can cover a lot of different areas, but in this context, is environmentally related. The second bucket is related to health and human services. So, you're all quite familiar with our human services grant process where we have about $500,000 per year that we grant to a variety of human services agencies. But it also includes some work on homelessness, housing and supportive services, so kind of the supportive services side of affordable housing, that part of the equation, working with a large number of those agencies to think about coordination and service delivery. How do we kind of tailor some of those subregional services to Issaquah local needs and help to get some efficiencies in that work? And that spans this whole range from prevention through crisis intervention on that, that whole scheme. And then, finally, there's a little more of an internally facing function that the department serves, and this is related to process improvement. We have a facilitation team, some of the integrated planning that we're doing, and then also, our equity and cultural inclusion work is also falling into that bucket of In terms of a few highlights from our 2019 accomplishments, there, we did a, run a solarized community campaign over the last year, and that culminated in an installation. Part of that program was a donation of a system to a local community partner. You can see a photo there of the ribbon cutting where the solar panels were installed at Friends of Youth here in downtown. As a part of that, I made note here of the Healthy Community Strategy. That's a body of work that's currently underway. We anticipate that that's going to be complete next year. The reason why I included it here as an accomplishment is because there was some significant work that we undertook to integrate the Healthy Community Strategy with our work on Housing Strategy 9, which relates to services for vulnerable populations, and then also work with the Parks Department and the Senior Center on a senior needs assessment. So, we took those three bodies of work and integrated them because they had a lot of synergies and overlap, and so that's how we're proceeding with that work, and it's a great opportunity to kind of take a look at those things a little bit more holistically so that our strategies are aligned. We also had a great welcoming week event. It was an Issaquah Welcomes You that scaled up significantly this year and moved to the seniors, or the community center. A great partnership between our department, city clerks, Parks Department, as well as the King County Library Services, King County Library System, as well as the Squaw Schools Foundation. We also did some work to, on some internal-facing staff cultural panels. This is a part of our kind of ramping into some equity and inclusion work, where we brought in some community members to sit down and meet with city staff and kind of share some experiences of our diverse community members and kind of what it's like to live in Issaquah, how government in Issaquah differs from other communities, different thoughts about engagement, a whole range of topics, which was very well-received. And that's one of three panels that we'll be sponsoring this year. A couple of other ones are the Squawk Talus Community Ride, and I note here, this is the rollout plan, which will be our accomplishment. We have been actively working with King County, and I know this has been one of those kind of rolling conversations about when does the service actually roll out. We have had some challenges with King County in the transition of a couple different project managers, as well as, most recently, their overall program manager. Some of those, and meanwhile, the county has also had some changes in their overall program mix and how they evaluate projects. So, there have been some challenges with that, but we're working with them to pin down the plans for rollout, and I am promised that that will happen by the end of the first quarter of next year. So, we'll have some additional details for that. We are working with the county to provide an update in early December.
Councilmember Hunt.
Do I, did I understand that the, the service will be available by first quarter next year?
That is our, our expectation, yes.
Okay. Not that, just making sure it wasn't the plan.
Yes.
And I think, I think this is something that a lot of community members really are looking forward to.
Absolutely. We also conducted some city facility energy and water audits. We looked at all of the major city facilities and opportunities for efficiency improvements and seeing where we could make some future investments. The next body of work is taking a look at an overall investment plan and then looking at opportunities for grant funding to see where we might be able to make some future investments. We are also working on updating a greenhouse gas emissions or carbon inventory. This is something that we've typically done on five-year cycles, and so, we're going to be catching up with that information and be sharing that out later this year, along with some additional information about regional climate planning and some resiliency work that's underway. And we also did some work on the, our Business Transportation Demand Management Program, which is called Salmon Friendly Trips. There was a focus on working with local businesses and making that connection between residents and some of our local businesses to help support a culture of different modalities for, between home and business here in town. And that was a good program that was largely funded through a regional mobility grant, worked with about 75 different local businesses here in town. And then, we also completed this thing, this strategic plan, earlier this year. In terms of 2020 projects, as I mentioned before, the Healthy Community Strategy, we're anticipating wrapping up that work and moving that forward for council's review and adoption. That is an element, that is an item that's included within the strategic plan. We'll also be doing some work on equity and cultural competency and some additional staff training around that. There are actually two pieces in the strategic plan that relate to equity. One relates to staff training and initiative. The other is related to working with the community to identify and remove barriers to accessing city programs and services. We're anticipating just a light touch on that. It's something that's, we hadn't expected to have some more resources available, but as we're doing some of the equity and cultural competency work, we expect to be able to identify some initial projects that we could start to work on, and so, we would start to get that underway, but wouldn't anticipate that that would be a kind of a full inventory or the engagement with the community would be a lighter touch there as well. We are also working on updates or developing sustainable development standards. This was an item that was identified in the Sustainable Building Action Strategy, and there's a couple of updates that are happening with Title 18, and then some regular building code updates that are anticipated next year. So, we want to take the advantage of that opportunity also to fold into that some recommendations for how we can better align some of our codes and standards to meet some of our community sustainability goals. So, that work will be underway. We also have something called a Transportation Management Action Plan, which is, governs essentially the kind of, as a site is developed and moves from kind of the permitting to occupancy, one of the pieces that doesn't necessarily follow is that part about how does, what's the site's responsibility for ongoing implementation of transportation measures? And so, this is, there is some code provisions right now, but it has some pieces that need to be clarified and would be updated as part of those Title 18 land use code updates. And then, those will be going into place and then some work in order to get those further into place in terms of kind of practice. We also will have a, kind of the third phase of our Salmon Friendly Trips Mobility Grant, which is coming through and working in partnership with King County. We'll also be working on a container weighing study on the solid waste services side of the equation. A lot of our rates and services are directly connected. A lot of our rates and services are directly connected to the weight of individual cans. And so everything that we can do to reduce the weight of those cans through diversion and composting has benefits to our community. So we need to take a look at those and see where those stand. We may be able to make some adjustments to our contract based on that, but more importantly, that positions us well for thinking about our next contract. So this is kind of important work that we need to do just to get prepared. We do have an option to extend our contract with Recology by a couple of years. We have one last extension, so we'll be having a conversation about whether or not we want to pursue that as well next year. Excuse me.
Councilmember Goodman.
Oh, sorry. Okay. A few other pieces are, council had expressed an interest in taking a look at the low-income utility discount. We currently have a program for seniors and wanting to evaluate some other options as we go forward, so we'll be doing some work there and having a conversation. The, next year is a human services grant request for proposals cycle. We go on a two-year cycle. So those will be requesting proposals for grants for 2021 and 2022. But that process needs to start up early next year. Additional item which we are anticipating next year, and as we heard some of the response back from council at our last session about the strategic plan and environmental stewardship, as we took a look back at our work program, we identified that there are some pieces that we think fit well and can be modified slightly to help to accomplish some of those strategic plan goals. And so we are anticipating doing some work with our local and regional environmental organizations to convene. It's been a while since we've gotten those groups together to talk about environmental priorities, ways in which we could collaborate, perhaps just some messaging that has opportunities for leveraging into stewardship activities, joint programming and things like that. And then also, next year's Earth Day's 50th year, 50th anniversary. So it's a great opportunity to kind of focus some attention through that partnership and then also celebrate some, an event in the community. And then finally, or a couple last things are, we're also planning to update the City Sustainability Report. We have a set of indicators that were developed by the community a number of years back. We decided to make, hold off on the last update to that while the strategic plan was being updated so that we can make some adjustments and align that better with the strategic plan. So we'll be doing that and updating the data and the report next year. And then finally, 2020 is also an important year from a census standpoint, and we'll be working with communications and others to make sure that we can get, let the word out and work with community partners to get a complete count.
Councilmember Goodman.
I no longer have a question. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Hunt.
So in our budget document, there's the Office of Sustainability Community Services, and then there's also the Office of Sustainability Sustainability Fund. And so I'm wondering why or where, how, how things are sorted into the two, into the two parts of the budget. So for example, the Squawk Talis Community Connections Pilot Project is in the Sustainability Fund, but the, but the Review of Low-Income Utility Assistance is in Community Services. And I'm just wondering.
Kind of how the breakout works. So generally speaking, kind of those health and human services functions are in the Community Services Fund, which, excuse me, comes directly out of the General Fund. And then the environmental programs and the other work is in the Sustainability Fund. The work on the utility discount, interesting since you brought that up, we actually have a couple of people working on that. One is our staff person who focuses on human services, and then also one of our person who works on utility-related services. And they kind of were tag teaming on it with some, doing some work related to it.
Okay. And you mentioned, so the Office of Sustainability Community Services is General Fund.
Correct.
And the Office of Sustainability Sustainability Fund is?
That, it has a combination of funds. There's some utility funding in there. Also, there's some fees that we receive through the solid waste contract, which is the primary driver for why that's a special revenue fund. And I think there's a small portion of a transfer in as well.
Okay. Is there some, is there some opportunity for maybe moving things around in future years, or is it pretty set which projects are under which part of that fund?
Yes, there is an opportunity.
And then I just wanted to make a comment about the low-income utility discount, which is that we do have this one low-income utility discount. It's for water, for seniors, as you mentioned, and it, I, it seems like when we talk about it, people don't know about it. And this has been my experience so far, so just wanted to say that again, that we do have this program. It is on our website. And also, as we are considering utility rate increases, I think having programs that people know about and that they are accessible is extremely important. And we know from that program that it's, it's very low, very underutilized by people that could benefit from it. So we need, I think, I think it's great that your department is considering other utility discounts because I think we need them, but I also think we need to make them accessible.
Oh, the city administrator.
Please, go ahead.
So I had two things. First off, can you go back up a couple of slides, one more? So staff cultural panels, did anything, did any actionable recommendations come out of that?
Oh, that's a great question. So those were really designed to provide a kind of forum for staff to hear from the, and engage with the community. They weren't necessarily designed to develop actionable items. One of the things that was asked is that staff shares kind of one or two key takeaways and send them off to our project manager on that. I know that she's been collecting that information. I haven't seen it just yet. But you know, that I think is going to inform us about, you know, what kinds of takeaways do they receive also will help to shape future community panels. Really, that's to help kind of raise the kind of familiarity and understanding of kind of the diversity of our community and the different considerations to take into account as we're thinking about engagement on different projects, or how programs and services might affect the community differently, perceptions of local government, a whole variety of things. So we anticipate that will kind of be a lead-in to additional work on more specific topics next year so that they might focus on more kind of items related to things like implicit bias, or customer service, or different areas where it can get connected more specifically to certain city services.
Okay. Because I think, I think those are, it's great that you're doing them, but I feel like if there isn't, if there isn't an output from it, it's almost like if a tree falls in the forest and you don't hear it. Like, it's great that staff is getting that sensitivity by talking out in the community, but to understand, like, an example would be, I feel like we have a large South Asian population that is relatively transparent to city, you know, engagement with elected officials and, you know, community feedback efforts. And I'm very eager to find out what their concerns are and how the city can respond better to them, because it's a, it's a large minority community that just, we don't hear from a lot. We don't hear from a lot.
Yeah. I, I think that's directly relevant. Really, this is kind of laying some foundations for some of that work, and some of the work will help, will happen through our communications team as they're thinking about different engagement strategies. Some of that will, work will happen as we start to look at different specific projects related to equity and cultural competence, competency in the future.
Okay. And the second question was, I think there was a statement made at the beginning of the evening that in regards to the identified potential, the environmental identified potential actions, that you and Jeff were going to have, reference specific potential actions.
Correct.
I'm not sure I heard that in your presentation.
So, let me go back. So there were, so looking at this, there were both a Healthy Community Strategy and the Equity Work, which were previously identified, and those were included in your table. The Healthy Community Strategy falls under Social Economic Vitality. Equity and Cultural Competency is under City Leadership and Services. And then the piece that was, the addition was the Sustainable Living Partnership, and that was, it would be under Environmental Stewardship.
Can, can you just offline make that a little more clear? I'm just, I'm not following it exactly as, as I look in the strategic plan, how to tie this back. So if you could just, you don't have to answer it right now, but if you could just give me a little.
Actually, I can, so in the strategic plan, there was a, under Environmental Stewardship, there was a, an action that was ES2A, that was Enhance Environmental Programs and Partnerships to Strengthen Community Knowledge and Support Widespread Adoption of Environmental Stewardship Activities by the Community. And so this relates to kind of some first steps in developing some of those partnerships and trying to leverage those partnerships for stewardship activity and education in the community.
Okay. I, I think the format earlier had been that the specific goal was, was linked, that makes it maybe a little easier for people to find.
Sure.
Since, since we're already talking about an update of this that includes the, the HR slides, maybe.
To make that reference.
Referring which, which goal is associated with each. Well, but the actions aren't, aren't specifically numbered right, but the goals are, but yeah, the action as well. The earlier ones referenced the goal, I think, the earlier ones tonight.
Okay.
But yeah, as much as you can show the, the tieback to the strategic plan, that'd be great.
You bet.
Several people. I'm going to go with Council Deputy President Batiste.
Thanks for your presentation tonight. And I just wanted to go back to, when you were talking about the container weighing study, and then I'm seeing explanation of reductions, the completion of the solid waste recycling services evaluation. So could you speak a little bit more to that? So there's, there's one more year, and then there'll be an evaluation of the partner that we would use or?
Sure. So previously, we had done some work, and I think as you may have heard through previous presentations, there's been some dramatic changes in the recycling markets. These are international effects that are affecting prices across the country, across the world, in fact. And so there was some work that Recology had, or there was a request by Recology previously to take, take into consideration some of those impacts, and so we were doing some work with them to assess what changes we might put in place. And I think the outcome of that is that we are not proposing to change any rates or services at this point in time. There may be some tweaks and adjustments to recycling material, materials that are accepted for recycling, and then an additional focus on contamination reduction. So we also went out and got some grants to help support that work in 2020. The container weighing evaluation is a different kind of an animal. It's more looking at our current system and what we're currently seeing set out of the curb or set out by our commercial customers. And so that will help to correlate what we have in our contract and our rates to what we're seeing in the field. And we will have the option of deciding whether or not those need to get incorporated into our current rates and services. But more importantly, and we can choose not to implement that, but more importantly, it will give us good data in order to go out for our next bid, if we choose to go out to bid for a new contract. If we choose to extend the contract by a couple of years, that will be a number of years out. But that's typically data that's not going to change dramatically over that timeframe, so it will have a pretty good shelf life.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt.
I wondered if the Sustainable Living Partnership and Earth Day 2020 was one of the three items, or three actions that was identified in our council meeting as what we wanted to do.
I don't believe this was one of the actions. I think there was one action that was related to the kind of city's policies and procedures and their alignment, and then there were a couple related to land acquisition. So this is, this is a little bit different than what was prioritized. So this was something that we had identified as we thought about the work and whether or not there might be a fit.
Okay. Yeah, I couldn't find the list, but it wasn't, it wasn't one that I remembered either. So I just wanted to point that out because we earlier looked at that chart where it had the number identified and the number followed through. And so I think in this case, it's still three and zero for environmental stewardship. And then there are a number of other actions throughout the plan that are identified as being part of the strategic plan, which is helpful. But again, with those lists that council prioritized, this one is still three and zero.
Correct. Good to note. Other questions for Director Fujimoto?
Nope. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
See if I'm following the alphabet correctly. Yes. Hi. Good evening. Jeff Watling, Parks and Recreation Director. Do my best to provide a succinct overview of a, of a rather diverse department. We are a team of 44 and a half FTEs, positioned within seven very distinct service groups or budget units. Within the proposed 2020 budget, we do have one FTE position proposed to be held vacant within our facilities, city facilities team. When I present an overview of unemployment, of employment, I would be remiss to not mention the over 150 part-time staff that we employ, train, and lead. Not only are these employees essential to us being able to deliver the diverse spectrum of stuff, services that our community expects, but something we really pay close attention to is, these are often first-time jobs for teens and young people in this community. And so in a lot of ways, that represents an employment program that we take very, very seriously in not only delivering our services, but also launching those young people into great careers, many of which are not in Parks and Recreation. Our department, really in all that we do, can be wrapped into three core services that are those next three bullets. We are the stewards of our city-owned parks, open space, and trails. This is roughly 1,400 acres that we oversee and maintain and manage with many diverse elements within it. Secondly, we manage and maintain the city facilities and buildings, one of which we're in right now. That represents over 200,000 square feet within 23 different buildings that the facilities team oversees. And then we provide a broad spectrum of quality recreation programs, events, rentals, and as well manage a number of recreation facilities, including the community center, the pool, the senior center, and the Pickering Barn. Some highlights of our 2019 accomplishments. Two pretty significant land acquisitions were completed in 19. Not only the Bergsma property, which is pictured there, as a pretty distinct hillside on Cougar Mountain, but as well the East Sunset Trailhead, which is on West Tiger. I think both of these acquisitions were both complex, but also examples of partnerships. Neither of these acquisitions we did by ourselves. Certainly, the partnership with TPL, with King County on the Bergsma property, but equally as such, in a much smaller parcel, the East Sunset Trailhead, and our partnership with Department of Natural Resources, State Department of Natural Resources was able to accomplish that. These acquisitions also are not just random acquisitions. They fit, they come right off the heels of the adopted park strategic plan, and one of our very, very high priorities of our community was how do we connect our internal city system with the outer public system that, that surrounds us. Another success accomplishment is the completion of the Confluence Park Turf and Irrigation Project. If you've been by there recently, you now notice it's, it's beginning to take a shade of green. As the irrigation has been put in, we have laid some sod and also turf seedlings are beginning to take shape, take shape throughout that, throughout that project. And I really think we're going to accomplish and see an increased capacity and, and increased use on that wonderful park. Some other accomplishments within our facilities team, some really important lifecycle replacements took place in our City Hall Police Building, both a new chiller, as well as some HVAC units within the IT server room and the dispatch office within police. We also were able to accomplish the completion of revising and reformatting the park plan goals and policies. You may recall, this was a request with the adoption of the park strategic plan by both you, council, and the PPC, the Planning Policy Commission. So that was accomplished earlier this, this year. We've taken a, piloted a new approach to some of our undeveloped properties, our Front Street properties. You may have noticed, if you've been down there on the south side of Front Street, piloting. piloting an interim activation. So we have been able to, through some work of our maintenance staff and some other partners, really convert what were four separate single-family parcels that we purchased to begin to at least look at an interim scale as a functional welcoming public space. So you'll notice the benches out there. It's been great to see just the past four weeks' use and people beginning to enjoy that space. So successful program there. Up on Lake Tradition Plateau, our city property up there, we also have another lifecycle replacement we completed with the Swamp Trail Boardwalk. This is a really well-used, family-friendly trail up on that property. Looking forward, leaning into 2020, a couple of highlights, the first two of which are related to the strategic plan. I'll do my best to identify the number. An apology, we'll certainly revise this PowerPoint to identify what those specific actions are. The first action is pertaining to one of the council-identified actions within ES3, Environmental Sustainability 3. And looking at our existing capacities, so both of these strategic plan objectives are not requesting or seeking additional or new money. This is really just reallocating some of our city resources. We see the ability to initiate some work around the citywide acquisition strategy and prioritization. So this, what this will look like next year is our park planning team taking the lead and bringing together multiple key departments within the city that do a number of acquisition strategies, whether it's the Stormwater folks or us in parks or others, and begin to look at and lay a framework for how we might best strategize and begin to prioritize those acquisitions. The second project I wanted to highlight pertaining to, as we launch our Green Issaquah partnership, this is a partnership as part of the Green City Program with Forterra, our regional nonprofit. As we complete the forest assessment work, and this forest assessment really is the groundwork for beginning to look at how we can better create a management plan around all of our open space properties, our roughly 1,200-plus acres of open space property. One of the implementation strategies that's going to come out of that work next year is a much more robust and healthy program around volunteers and creating volunteer stewards. And so this too is one of the actions within environmental sustainability under ES2 on how we might be able to create further, and I'm trying to remember the exact wording of the strategy, but basically increasing volunteer opportunities within our open space system. And so again, by reallocating some of our park operations, staff time and resources beginning to create some capacity within that team to expand our abilities to handle volunteer programs. Also for 2020, looking at completion of the dog park, we've made significant progress this year as we've worked through site selection, beginning to work with the community on the layout of that. We've just, last week, formed some initial work and meeting with a potential Friends of Group and laying out a construction plan. We see completion of that happening in 2020. We also see the installation of new fitness equipment at the community center as that. Equipment is very much near the end of its useful life. That'll be a key reinvestment. Also in our work plan for 2020 is the completion for designing and creating a design for parks, trails, and city wayfinding signage. This will not only create unified signage throughout our public system, but I think also what we'll find is create better performance and better functionality of those public assets as people are better able to read and understand how to connect and how to get from A to B. Lastly, we will be applying for state grant funding for the Burgsma acquisition. So as we've been successful, as we laid out that acquisition, we also laid out a really important funding strategy that took a look at both regional grant dollars, but also state grant dollars. Those state grants will be a key part of our work next year.
Councilmember Hunt.
You spoke about, I think, expanding the work that's done under the Green Issaquah Partnership, but I also noticed that you're reducing the funding that was allocated for the Green Issaquah Partnership by half, and I wondered how that's going to happen.
Yeah, that's a great question. So as we launched it this year, we had $100,000 budgeted. As we were making and needing to make hard decisions in terms of budget reductions, a number, some of that money that was done in 2019 was really one-time money. So what you see in the budget is $50,000 for 2020 is what we see. Those funds are the portion needed for the ongoing work as we continue with contracted work with Forterra. That is the portion that we see needed to keep the program going as the management plan gets completed.
That money that goes to Forterra, then?
A portion of that would be contractual relationship with Forterra, yes.
Okay. Not right now, but it'd be good to know what portion. And then also, I wondered, under the capital improvement, can you remind me, the Tibbetts Valley Park and Veterans Memorial Field, Depot Park, Pedestrian Park, is that money for the master planning efforts?
Yes, within the 2020 budget.
Yeah, so $400,000?
I'd have to look at the CIP, and I can get back with you on that.
Okay. I'm just looking at that, and I was looking at the CIP, and it didn't seem like that $400,000 was the same, or maybe it's a different project. So I'm just trying to figure out what that is. And also, if it's for some improvements or something, then I would wonder why we're doing a master planning effort on these parks and also doing something else.
I believe that's a future, that's a further year than 2020?
It's 2020, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I would like to know.
What we have anticipated within the CIP is, as we complete that master plan, those master plans, that there would likely be phased improvements that those master plans would recommend. So those would be an initial first phase of improvements.
Okay. I think I would just like more information about that because I know the planning is still happening too. Thanks.
Councilmember Walsh.
So I'm going to second that. That was my first thing. I just wanted to take a moment to commend you. Looking at the overall budget, your Parks and Recreation Department in 2019 had an adopted budget of almost $10.5 million. It's a big budget. It's, what, seven different sub-departments? Your 2020 proposed budget is $9.6 million, and I think it's just important for the community to be able to highlight that and show that with a large budget, there are definite cuts and definite changes across the board.
Councilmember Ray.
So Jeff, what would happen if we did not install new fitness equipment at the community center, or if we didn't complete the design for parks, trails, and citywide wayfinding? One of your last, two of your last three bullets there.
So what if? Two different questions. The fitness equipment, again, this is primarily focused on the most popular equipment, the cardio equipment. It really is, probably being generous in saying it's near the end of its useful life. In some cases, it's at the end of its useful life. And so without, the more we delay that needed replacement, we're probably looking at more downtime for that equipment as it's needing to be repaired. In terms of the wayfinding sign plan, I think to not do that, again, that's something that could be delayed. We would be, I think, within our existing hodgepodge isn't the right word, but a loose mix of various signage that we have throughout our park system and throughout our trail system. Something we saw and heard loud and clear in our park strategic plan was how to make our trail system more readable and more usable. And actually, if you look at the park strategic plan, one of the operational priorities and strategies was just this. So we could do, we could delay it. We would just be sort of living as is, as we are right now.
Councilmember Walsh.
I forgot one more thing. Looking at your expenditures, you have $646,000 of professional services. I'd like to get a sense of what that covers.
So you're referring within all seven of the business units and the reductions that are being made within professional services? Or you're saying that's what's...
No, that is your 2020 proposed budget for professional service across all of those sub-departments. So trying to get a sense of what that is because I couldn't figure that out looking through the individual.
Yeah, gladly. Yep. I think what you'll see is a mix of whether it's recreation programs. We do a lot of contracted programs, so those might be contractual relationships we have with recreation providers. It may be within facilities. It's going to be a mix of on-call services that we have and that we need, but I'll gladly give you a breakdown of what those are. But it's a pretty varied mix.
I'm going to be just slightly cranky for a second here and just say, can we just get the dog park done this year? You know, that got authorized on a night like tonight, late in the evening. Councilmember Polly championed that, and it's been two years. And let's just, I don't want to, I don't want to, at the end of next year, be seeing a line item for the 2021 parks budget to complete the dog park. Thanks.
Yep. Let's get it done. Absolutely.
Other questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
The Bike Skills Park has been 10 years.
For comparison.
Let's get that done as well.
All right. Thank you, Director Watling. And with that, Chief Beerbaum. We're at just, just ahead of 11 o'clock right now. Your pace. Your slide.
Good evening. I'm Scott Beerbaum, Chief of Police for the Police Department. Wanted to talk a brief overview of our department. The Police Department is comprised of four major divisions, 72 employees, spread out over the patrol, dispatch services, records, and our corrections facility. In addition to responding for the calls and service, that's what gets most of the attention with the Police Department, I want to talk a little bit further about our dispatch, jail, and records as well. Dispatch handles, it's the unsung heroes of the Police Department, and they handle a majority of our traffic with our community and our first line of connection with our community, and also ensure the safety of our officers. They provide, we provide services, 911 and dispatch services for the city of Snoqualmie, for the city of North Bandan, for the city of Issaquah. Just to be clear, though, with all of these calls for service, 60,000 phone calls and 40,000 CAD calls, not all call is the same. Just the other night, after I left one of the budget meetings, going in, have a conversation with our dispatch center, and one of our dispatchers was handling a domestic violence case where a victim who had just been attacked by a loved one, meanwhile, summoning aid and getting the information to our police officers. It is a balancing act, and they are amazing at what they do. Additionally, our jail, in addition to our Issaquah daily population, we also provide services for about 18 contract cities throughout King County. This helps offset some of the operational costs of our jail, brings in about $850,000 in revenue anticipated for 2019. In addition to all of the bookings, about 3,500, that is managing all of those in and out of the, of our population within our jail. We average about a three and a half day stale for, stay for average daily stay, and we have also managing several hundred transports a year for court purposes. You heard from the court earlier, and you saw like the caseload that they were addressing. Want to talk a little bit about our records department as well. We're looking on pace for about 1,000 records, public records requests, and about 900 weapons transfers. The records requests are dealing with attorneys, it's dealing with victims of crimes, insurance companies, et cetera. A lot of them are managed online, but there is a lot of hand checking that goes with them, making sure that there's redaction that goes through place to make sure that the information is not being released to people. It shouldn't be acquiring it, but making sure that people also have it. The weapons transfers is interesting. As of July 1st with the new law, we saw an increase of work that we have to do for managing sale or weapons transfers. July 1st, we have to do weapons checks on semi-automatic rifles and also through firearms parts. So we've seen an increase on that this year for that July 1st, for this law. Keep in mind, when we do a weapons transfer or a weapons check, we're looking at a minimum of 10 databases that we review prior to issuing either the approval of the sale or the transfer. Washington is a mandated state of you shall issue, so we have timelines restraining that. So our records department is very busy. And this is in addition to processing all the case reports for all of our calls for service, et cetera, and making sure that we're passing things on to the court for all the cases. But it is a, it's a very, a lot of busy pieces for our department. Somewhere 2019, accomplishments I want to highlight is the parent project. Actually, our third cohort just started this last week, and what the parent project is, is a workshop focused on empowering parents to work with their at-risk teens. The first half of the cohort is really based on providing some tools and resources to those parents, and then the second half is kind of transitioning to more of a self-led cohort and working towards developing those. Next part I'd like to highlight is kind of our work within equity, department-wide equity and implicit bias training. For years, our department's been committed to training not just our police officers, but all staff, because it's just everyone that has contact with the community. So we've, we're one of the first in the state to train all of our staff in crisis intervention. We're also working towards having all staff trained on equity implicit bias. I-940 was passed last year. It's now called Latasca. It's what the new comment is, is there's a big focus on de-escalation training, and there's going to be state mandates on that. We're going to continue to work towards that, but we're not just going to focus on our police officers. We're also going to make sure that our corrections, our dispatchers, and our records, anyone who comes in contact with police or with our community, I think it's really important that we stay focused on that. But we'll see additional training on that in 2020. Another piece is kind of the increase and focused on our employee resiliency program. A lot of our staff members deal with like the vicarious trauma or continuous trauma addressed to managing critical incidents or just dealing with some of the crimes and some of the incidents that our people see. So we've increased our peer support team, our critical incident debriefs, and also then establishing, make sure that our people have a lot of connections to resources. So we're trying to take care of our people as well, just like, you know, you take care of your vehicle, you want to buy, you know, making sure that it's tuned up. We're really working hard to take care of our people on that end as well. Court stole our thunder a little bit earlier to talk about video court. That is one of the things that we really have implemented, a lot of good work between the court, the Police Department, our corrections facility, our public defenders, and the prosecutors to get that up and running. So that helps reduce some of the transports that we've been seeing, and also just provides a little bit of safety and security for all of our inmates as well. In 2020, some of the two main projects, one of the main ones we're going to be talking about and working on is accreditation process. It's usually every three-year process, and we're due for reaccreditation in 2020. It takes approximately 300 hours of staff time to make sure that we have all of our documentation prepared. Basically, accreditation is kind of a best practices review, making sure that your department is up to those, following all those different guidelines. Really what that does is it increases credibility and also public trust while decreasing that risk to our exposure to liability. And then the last one is, is talking a little bit about our additional collaboration on our 911, and then of course, our radio network. This is obviously a lot more external focus or regionally focused. And let's talk about P-CERN first. P-CERN is our, the update of the Regional Public Safety Radio Network. Probably some of the things that you will be seeing in Q1 of 2020 is the service level agreements that we have, that all agencies are going to have to have to sign on to P-CERN. There's going to be additional testing and coverage, testing for all of our radio network, and then hopefully, we won't really see the system coming live more towards the end of '22, 2022. 911, what we're going to be focusing on is like efficiency... be focusing on is like efficiency on our records management system and our, our regional training on our dispatchers. We're also going to be working with Redmond on ensuring that our back, Redmond is actually one of our backup centers. We also have a emergency backup center up at Redmond. We want to increase the number of 911 lines that are coming in there. So we're working with Redmond to, to help increase that as well.
Councilmember Hunt, you had a question?
I might, I might have answered it. So I was wondering, you mentioned that $850,000 is the revenue from the jail. And so I'm trying to understand the budgeting of the jail. But so that offsets the expenditures, the expenditures are 2.3 million for the jail?
It helps, it helps offset. It doesn't completely offset.
Okay. And is that, is that from the contracts with other cities? Okay.
Yes, it is for the, for the inmates that are housed within our facility, yes, through the contracts with the other cities.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Walsh.
I'll piggyback on that idea. What percentage of residents in the jail are Issaquah versus those other cities? And is that commensurate to the cost recovery?
Two-part question. Great question. I would say our average daily population is getting close to about 28 Issaquah inmates per day. Our overall average population is hovering, it varies, it's around in the low 50s. And so we're a little bit more than half of our, of the population in there, Issaquah inmates versus the rest at this point. It is a 72-bed jail, so we do have the capacity to have up to 72 inmates in there. We do evaluate our costs. We also have contracts with some of our cities. So what we charge for room and board at our, at our facility is based off of what our costs are, but also maintaining a, some of our contract requirements.
So just to do a little quick math in my head, if your proposed budget for the jail is 2.3 million, and we're getting 850 from other cities and municipal governments, and there's a, about 50% of the residents are Issaquah, it sounds like 850 is not 50% of 2.3 million.
Correct.
So it sounds like we're not getting a full cost recovery from those contracts? Or is it because there's empty beds and other things?
There is empty beds. So there is, you know, there are sometimes up to 20 empty beds within the facility. And so that is, you know, that is potential of not renting out those beds at that, at that moment. Additionally, there's a lot of personnel costs that we are going to have. And this is one of the conversations we had a couple of years ago with council is for staffing for that, because of some of the mandatory requirements for staffing and cross-gender searches, we've been, you know, tried to increase our staff to make sure we have at least two staff on at all times, 24-hour operation. So we're, we're playing catch-up a little bit on, on that as well.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for a little bit more information about those contracts, what their kind of timeline is for renegotiation, who it's with, just kind of give me some information.
Sure.
Thanks.
Other questions?
I have a quick one. So I think the, the bike that you showed was the ST-1300. That's going, that's, is the police model still in production, or are they finally phasing that out? And if so, what are, what are we going to look to other bikes? I just, I said as quick, as there's-
It's a great question.
Quick answer.
That is a great question. I'm going to have to look a little bit further at the replacement schedule for that to give you a good answer.
I'm curious, because like I said, they've, they've discontinued the civilian line, and my understanding was that they were getting rid of the police line as well. It's a great bike, but okay. If you could, let me know.
Great question.
Just curious. All right. Looks like there's no other questions. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, 30 seconds.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Seaman. I'm the Transportation Manager here at the city, and happy to be here to talk to you a bit about what we do in Public Works Engineering. Joining me is Bob York, our Utilities Manager, and together we'll be answering all your questions and filling in for Sheldon tonight. So to start us off, much like many of the other folks have done, we're going to give you a brief overview of our department, highlight some of the 2019 accomplishments, and talk a bit about our plans for 2020. So in the big picture, we have 17 positions, one unfunded. It's currently being held vacant. We're responsible for all the major infrastructure elements in the city, including transportation, water, sewer, and stormwater. So these 17 positions together cover those four infrastructure elements. We are the department that's responsible for the design, engineering, and construction of, of all capital projects within the Street Capital Fund, the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. It's our job to manage, manage these systems to ensure that they're engineered properly and built properly to city standards. So that's both projects that we're the lead on, and also projects that developers are the lead on. In addition to our work, we're also play a key role in support of other departments on engineering questions. So that includes our DSD Development Department, Parks, PWO, to just to name a few. So when they have questions that involve those four areas of infrastructure, we usually are working with them. So in addition to projects, we're also developing the larger policies and plans that support each of those elements. So for example, as you know, I'm heavily involved in the Transportation Master Plan right now, and Bob can speak a bit to some of the plans that he's been working on from the utility side. And in addition, this is again in Bob's group, we do administer the environmental programs, both for compliance and restoration of our water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. So that's what we do. And I'm happy to highlight, and again, Bob and I are going to split this up a bit, but I'm going to highlight some of the, a few of the accomplishments from the transportation side, and Bob's going to speak to the utility accomplishments. But we started the year with the opening of the 62nd Street Connection. So a lot of these projects, as you know, are huge, big projects, and there are many years from conception through design, have a lot of moving pieces to construction and completion. So they're expensive, and they take a while, but they do yield big benefits. So the Southeast 62nd is really a major, or one of the major east-west connections on the north side of I-90. So it's a, it's a very important part of our philosophy in transportation, which is to provide better connections through the city. So another accomplishment that we're proud of is that by the end of the year, we will have completed 90% design of the Newport 54th to 900 project, which is the more westerly of the two Newport projects. This is a project that when I first started here, we were just, we'd been talking about for years, but we really hadn't made a lot of progress. So we had some preliminary open houses, got the community to agree on a design that, that we could all agree would work best for our city. And now we're moving forward, again, with a 90% design, looking forward to begin acquiring right away next year. This includes some recent work with the Burisma property, some modifications to that design along Burisma. Again, sort of a theme here you'll hear is large projects. I believe the, the current price tag estimate for this Newport project is around $46 million for construction. And then finally, finally, again, highlights, for us in 2019, will be the advertising of the 43rd Signal, also known as Providence Point Signal. So we have not yet advertised, to be clear, we've not yet advertised that, pending final formal council approval for that, for those funds. But we do have the plans ready, and we're ready to go on that one. So with that, for the 2019 accomplishments, I'll let Bob jump in here and talk about the utility side of things.
Good evening. Bob York, Public Works Engineering Utilities Manager. Well, our projects aren't quite as big as Southeast 62nd, but we have, we've highlighted two accomplishments this past year. One early in the year, as you might recall, is the adoption of the Water System Plan. That's a two-year effort that got adopted, and now it's been accepted by the King County Council recently as well. So that pays the, the final approval of Washington State Department of Health. That Water System Plan has a shelf life of 10 years before we have to, are required to do another one. So good accomplishment there. The other thing we've been working on this year, and we've essentially reached the 95, 90, the 95th, 95% complete as of tomorrow, is the Spar Water System Improvement Project. That's a secondary redundant pipe and pump station to feed the Highlands, including critical facilities like Swedish Hospital. Gives us a seismic resiliency and other elements. We, again, by the end of the year, will have reached the 90, or the 100% complete stage. And we're in the permitting process with not only our own local development services, but also getting final approvals from WASHDOT on that project. I'll turn it back to Kurt for the next step.
Thanks, Bob. So we'll briefly, now we'd like to go through, pretty excited about what's happening in 2020, which is around the corner. And so we are going to continue design, and as I mentioned, start right away acquisition, which is the next important step for both of the Newport Way projects. So that's both Maple to Sunset and 54th to One, another project near and dear to our, to my heart, to our hearts, is, is completing the Master Mobility Plan. So you all should expect to see more from us and hear more from us as we get closer to adoption of that plan. We've been working very hard with the Transportation Advisory Group and have a lot to share. So that's going to be a really key document in helping define how we spend our transportation dollars and what's important, and how these big projects fit in with smaller projects for the city, and how Issaquah fits in more broadly to the, to the regional transportation system. I'm going to skip that one, great fish, and then we'll come back to that, because there's a couple more transportation projects I want to talk to, and then I'll hand it over to Bob. So the 12900 design is an intersection improvement where the old Tully's is there on 900, adjacent or near to the other city hall. That's improving that intersection, adding additional turn lanes. That is a project that is part of the development agreement we have with Costco. So we're looking forward to getting that started and completed. We just selected a consultant HDR to begin that design work. One of council's, I think, favorite projects, and important, important to us, is this pinch point project, the non-motorized improvements for Northwest Sammamish Road. So we're looking forward to designing those improvements so that we have a, so that we actually can connect the South Cove residents to the State Park and the rest of Issaquah. So that's a, that's a cool, important project for next year. Kind of goes without saying that once we get the 43rd project out to bid and advertise, that we'll be spending a large part of our time next year on the construction of that signal. And then we will also, are in the process now of designing some, some modifications to the 43rd East Lake Sammamish Roundabout. Those will generally, in a, in a big picture, we haven't talked too much to you all about that, but in a big picture, those will be modifications to slow down the vehicle speeds at that roundabout and make it easier for pedestrians to cross that very busy roundabout. So I'm going to, the rest of the projects here, Bob, are yours, and then we'll both be here to answer your questions.
I'm going to start with Councilmember Walsh.
But Bob's still got-
Can wait until the end.
2020 projects to highlight.
I'll be less than a minute.
You guys want to wait to put your lights on until you want to have your questions asked?
Okay. One 2020 accomplishment that makes sense is we finished the design, now we'll bid, and begins construction of the Spar Water Improvement Project, the one I talked about earlier. Our goal on this and most projects I do is to get the advertisement out early, because what we found in, in recent years especially, is that if we advertise early in the year, we get better bids than waiting to the peak construction season. So that's our next step on Spar. Now, how do I go backwards? Okay. And then we started this year on the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan. And we hired a consultant, we completed the data discovery phase. We're now in the, beginning the data analysis phase. And what you can expect in 2020 is that we'll make significant progress on that, including informational briefings with the council, stakeholder meetings internal and external, and, and staff reports. So there'll be numerous council touches as we progress in 2020. Our goal before the end of 2020 is to produce a draft report that's issued to the various agencies and council adoption schedule for early 2021. This project's not just the stormwater build infrastructure, but there's a heavy emphasis on prioritization of our, our restoration projects within the, in the natural creeks. So we hope to make good progress on that and get counsel feedback in 2020. And that concludes our formal slideshow. We're ready for questions.
Right. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. So I have two concerns. Looking in the Street Operating Fund Engineering section of the budget, I see that there is a $225,000 reduction, eliminating one-time funding for completed projects, which includes grant writing for several large transportation capital projects. And it says that in 2020, it is intended that the costs associated with grant writing will be absorbed by capital project budgets. I have a hard time understanding that. That seems to be an investment, which we're then saying, let's spend less, but we're also going to get less? So perhaps a clarification on how that can be achieved within a capital budget when previously we were spending operations budget on it?
Right. So I, I think fundamentally agree with what you just said. I think that if we, you know, in the perfect world, if we had money set aside just for grant writing, and maybe even part of an FTE for grant writing, that would be a potentially valuable return on your investment. So, you know, things are, we're looking for ways to do more with less, as we say. So there are opportunities to, and we have done that successfully on some of the Newport projects. We have been able to secure grant money within the cap, within the budgets for those projects, typically with consultant help on those. So, so it does work. It's, it's not as, as effective potentially, as you mentioned, if we were to have more of a, I think what you're talking about is more of a grant writer type person. So that's, I think that's, you know, right or wrong, I think that's what our, that's what that's meant to address.
So what I'd like to then ask as information that would be helpful in analyzing that is how successful we've been in the past, how much money we've spent on it, on outside contracts versus FTE, kind of hours, time, whatever that is, and then how much we've received in grants. I want to make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot. Similarly, second question, in the operations and management area, I see that there's a reduction to repairs and maintenance of $185,000, which says there will be reductions to roadway repairs- and maintenance of $185,000, which says there will be reductions to roadway repairs, contractor tree removal, signal detection replacement, and annual crosswalk maintenance program where the department will prioritize the most critical needs. That, to me, is not a city savings, that's a city deferment, which will end up costing us more money. And so I'm trying to understand the ramifications of that, and...
So, so I think that Brett's going to be right behind me here. And so we work, you know, the way that, that Public Works is structured is we're on more of the design engineering end of things, and Brett and his folks are on the operation and maintenance of things. I think they'll fit well with Brett's presentation right after ours here. It's a great, it's a great question.
Other questions? Councilmember Hunt.
Are, are these projects' costs for the different transportation programs, are they all the same costs as in the CIP?
Are the...
The costs in the, in the CIP in our budget, are they all the same?
They should be. I, I, I guess I would, don't quote me from a line-by-line basis, but that is the intent, yes.
I just wondered if any of them had changed scope?
Not that, no, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up on some things. And then I just wondered, so some of these are dependent on decisions that council hasn't yet made, I think. So, for example, some of these having to do with, I would think the Semamish Road Non-Motorized Improvement Project, that's something that we talk about, funding the, most of that through the sales tax that we haven't yet made a decision on. So I'm wondering if, and then the other big one is the water treatment plant. So we haven't yet made a decision on that, but it's budgeted for $5.4 million in 2020. So I'm wondering what happens with the timelines if council, for example, doesn't decide to do those, because we haven't yet made those decisions, what happens with the budget on those?
So I think, I think our city administrator can answer some of that. Let me just give you, just to take a quick stab at part of it. This is our work plan, these are our projects. This is what we've shared with you consistently, and makes sense to us for logical improvements for the community. Now, we understand you haven't made those final difficult decisions yet. And so when you do, and should they be different from what we're talking about now, of course, we'll need to be coming back to you to share with those what, what we're doing, if we're not doing what I'm talking about with you tonight.
Okay, right. And so my question is really because some of these things we are already doing, we've already made the decision to do, it's the second year of a, you know, multi-year project and that sort of thing. And then some of them are budgeting things that we are actively discussing doing, but not decided on. So that's sort of the basis of the question.
Councilmember Hunt, members of the council. So, Councilmember Hunt and I have talked about this on and off for the last couple of days. This comes down to the issue of the one-year CIP. The council has had discussions about the longer-term CIP, and I think there's been an emphasis that the CIP, the longer-term CIP is sort of a roadmap or a projection. For 2020, though, we have projects that we're looking to budget and move forward with. So the council may wish to double back to what's in essence the one-year CIP. Some of those are financed through the general fund, through debt, and we can speak to that more if you'd like before we leave this evening. The others come from the enterprise funds. So one big enterprise fund project deals with, with water treatment. There are unresolved issues there. There are also fee increases and tax increases associated with that. So as we are, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, council president, but since we're one presentation away from being done, I think, two presentations away from being done, that a big question for the council moving forward in order to balance the budget is what to do with the water projects, what to do with the water rate, what to do with the utility tax rate. And so that kind of all comes together. And so it's my hope that perhaps before we leave this evening, we can, as part of talking about the roadmap moving forward, perhaps put that toward the front of the list. Because I think that if the council comes to an agreement of what process and approach you want to do for those projects, some other things may fall more easily in place. So, but as, but as Kurt said, again, the long-term CIP is sort of the vision, but this budget is an operating budget, and it contains an operating budget for the capital improvement program for 2020.
So I'm not sure how much we're going to get to beyond the slides tonight. We'll see how, we'll see how it times out. But I think the council is pretty close to cooked at this point.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, I think, though, that five or 10 minutes just to start laying groundwork for what comes next. Let's, let's hope we get there. Follow your direction.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up?
Councilmember Hunt.
So, so in the budget, it also refers to that the CIP is a planning document, and revenues are not authorized until they have been adopted through the annual budget process. But, so I'm wondering, though, if we are adopting the budget, and there are things here that are dependent on future decisions, are we authorizing those projects through the adoption of the budget, or will we have another chance to revisit those separately?
Well, as we've, we talked earlier with Munus, all those projects will require council action to move forward. I think it's ultimately a policy decision for the council, if you wish to come back to them at a later point, or recognize that the budget is allocated, and that as we go through the actual final decision-making and contracts are let, then the money is obligated through those contracts. But that's, that's a policy discussion, council.
Councilmember Ray.
So following up on that line of question, or discussion, are there some key dominos that we need to topple over first for the rest of the stack? I mean, some things, some questions that we need to address sooner rather than later, so that we can get the other things that back up behind them lined up appropriately, so we're not kind of doing the mundane stuff first and letting the very important decisions languish? What are the most important decisions we need to make today, or sooner rather than later, so that we can keep moving forward?
In talking with Mayor Polly over the last several days, I think it is her desire to come back to the council either directly or through an administration proposal that would, would lay some groundwork to accomplish that. I, I think the council has spent a number of hours up till this point getting information, asking questions. We've done our best to answer those questions. But now, as you transition to the next phase for deliberations, certainly it's been my past practice in my years as a city manager, to try to, to set the table for you, having listened to your comments, connect as many dots for you as possible on the front end. And then if there's agreement with that, then double back to anything that may be either individual council members or groups of council members. That then builds the groundwork to, to have a balanced budget. And again, I think Mayor Polly has felt, while she is watching at home, good evening, Mayor Polly, that, that, you know, she would like to reconnect with this after also hearing the council's comments. And so we're, she and I are both talking about how best, and I think she is anxious to talk to some of you as well, so that you can make the most of the last phase of this, to have, have meaningful discussions that are mindful of, of time and the resources that we have here. So I feel like I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, sir, so I apologize. But, you know, we're almost there. And I think that, you know, it's everyone's desire on the staff, part of the administration, that this last phase be as productive as possible.
So, does it answer your question for now, Chris? I have a question about Southeast 43rd. I thought Southeast 43rd was different. All sorts of other stuff. I thought we were already, already pulled the trigger on Southeast 43rd, and I thought we were talking about going out for bid in the fall. I thought that was one of the reasons why we funded it the way we did, because we didn't want to delay it, and we were gonna, we were gonna go out for bid in the fall. Am I wrong about that? But I'm hearing we're not going to go out to bid till after the 2020 budget is approved?
No. So I guess I'm, maybe I'm a little unclear if it's funded or not. We're ready to, just for, from our end, those plans are ready, we're ready to bid, we can do that immediately. My understanding was we weren't quite there yet, but I...
I thought we made all the decisions about Southeast 43rd we needed to do. I thought there was, everybody said, Ray, we've decided, we're doing it, pull the trigger, go.
So the CIP, as we've discussed, is, is a, is a planning document. So we need appropriation authority to go forward with it.
I thought Southeast 43rd was different than, than other things.
No, we need to have budget authority for that. So the plan is to go out to bid this next month and to award the contract in January. But one of the other things that we're going to be bringing forward for you to consider, I believe November 4th, we will be also transmitting an inter-fund loan, because we aren't going to be able to sell the bonds until later this spring. So we're going to need to have you also authorize an inter-fund loan to give the Public Works Department the funding it needs to proceed with the project.
With an award in 2020.
Correct, correct. Early 2020.
Maybe the first meeting or the second meeting in 2020, but still in 2020.
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, we have two, two presentations left. Brett?
Good evening. Brett Heath, Public Works Operations. I'll give you a real quick rundown on what we're doing in Public Works. So we have six divisions, 44 employees. We do streets, there's about 100 or 285 miles, lane miles of roads, and all the signs and, and curb and et cetera that goes along with that, roughly 156 pieces of rolling stock, and in addition to all the small tools and equipment. And then in emergency management, Emergency Management Division, happy to say we have about 70 active volunteers that are engaged with us on a regular basis for emergency management. And we have trained over 800 CERT volunteers so far and counting. So that's a really great program we're moving along on. On the water side of things, the utilities, we have 141 miles of water main in the city. And more importantly, we have 16 pump stations, because we're pumping water from the valley floor up three different mountains. So for the size of our community, it's a very complex water system. And conversely, on the sewer side of things, we collect it and send it to Metro. So that's fairly straightforward. Stormwater, 142 miles of pipe. That doesn't include the ditches, the treatment facilities, and all the other odds and ends that go along with stormwater. So what's new? Things that are being added, you've heard earlier from Public Works Engineering and Department of Development Services about the projects that are going on. They all end up in Public Works Operations to take care of for their lifespan. And just this year, we've added, this is not, certainly not all-inclusive, but 14 new RRFBs. Those are the flashing lights you see at the crosswalks, another 14,000 square feet of pavement, 21,000 square feet of bridge deck, four more booster pumps, a couple of reservoirs, roughly 200 catch basins, 15 treatment facilities, et cetera, et cetera, and the count goes on. So those are things that we're picking up on an annual basis. They get included in the infrastructure we maintain, and they don't go away. That's all additive. 2019, so we put down about 3,700, 3,700 tons of asphalt through the pavement management program. That was five streets. And one of our, we're doing lots of maintenance on things all the time, but one of our larger maintenance projects was repairing one of the stormwater ponds up in Issaquah Highlands. The liner had failed, and so that was, that project was accomplished this fall. 2020 projects, we're looking to begin a sanitary and stormwater pipe inspection program. We are, we're going to put some covers, we have some mineral bins we need to cover so that we can better manage our road salt situation. We're actually going to try and retire the Windows 98 system that's running our HVAC at the, at the maintenance facility. And of course, we have the pavement management program again. So that's it for Public Works Operations.
Questions? Councilmember Walsh.
Okay, so I had asked previously, we are seeing a reduction of $185,000 to repairs and maintenance. So I would like to get a sense of what that overall budget is, what portion of it is then getting deferred, and any sense of the ramifications of that? And maybe that's an email response, but...
Sure, yeah. To that level of detail, it probably is. Just roughly, I can tell you, asphalt patching is being deferred. We're going from 350 tons down to 100 tons of asphalt patching. This is in addition to the pavement management program. We have a number of traffic controllers that, well, quite a few of them are on, at the end of their lifespan, 30 years old. We need to replace three. We're going to just do one and keep the other two running as long as we can, hopefully in, maybe into next year's budget. So we have a number of things like that, where we're, in order to reduce our budget, we've made some decisions on how we're going to do that. So, yeah, you're going to see some, you'll notice some things in the community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein, did you have a question?
I do now. Brett, the pavement management amount, how does that align with what you really think we ought to be doing?
A little less than half of what we should be doing. So I think we're funded, proposal is $900,000 for this year, which is what we had for 2019. 2020's proposal is the same, $900,000. When we, last time we looked at that, if my memory serves me correct, we're at about 1.6, 1.8 million to fund that, fully fund.
You gave us a presentation, I believe, or earlier in the year.
Yeah, I did, Bennett did. He gave you a presentation earlier, yes.
We could go back to that and see what...
Yes.
From that, what you, according to that plan?
Yes.
Level, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you very much. We started off with Autumn, we're going to end up with Autumn.
Hi again, I'm Autumn Monahan, Assistant to the City Administrator, and providing an overview of Support Services, which is a division that I also supervise. So a quick department overview, we have 11 FTEs, 10 are currently filled, and one is held vacant in the proposed budget. To enhance efficiencies, we utilize a centralized team model focused on providing exceptional customer service, both internally and externally. And our surface includes more than 35 tasks citywide. Here's just a quick overview of some of those tasks. Our team provides everything from pet licensing, to boards and commission support, to risk management, to our passport program, which is quite popular. For 2019 accomplishments, the Support Services Team has been heading up our new customer relation management system. And we're hopeful to launch that end of this year or early next year. And we've been very creative in some staffing solutions for providing some greater flexibility among several city buildings and teams. Our Support Services Team also has head up a purchasing team internally to help find efficiencies in what we're purchasing and how. And we've performed a lot of tasks I mentioned before. Examples include processing 254 contracts this year, close to 8,500 invoices, and more than 1,700 passport applications. Our 2020 projects include finishing up the CRM project, and as part of that, developing some customer service standards. So that would be kind of the first launching point on that strategic plan item. Enhancing front counter services through consolidation at City Hall Northwest. Currently, right now, when customers come to City Hall Northwest, we have several different front desks for where you get passports, where you interact with our permit center, and several other services. And so we'll be consolidating that into one front counter in 2020. Helping to develop some citywide training curriculum, supporting implementation of the city's financial management platform, and developing some internal metrics to help us measure the impact of the services that Support Services provides. Any questions?
Councilmember Ray.
I'm the broken record today. So the Customer Relationship Management System here is the same one we've called a Customer Request Management System. Okay, so that's just one thing. So you have it listed as a 2019 accomplishment, but you also have it listed as a 2020 project. Is that the same thing, or is that a redundant? Are we finishing the implementation? What does that mean to me?
So by early 2020, we'll have launched the new software, and it'll be available to the public. There will still be a lot of work, as we've discussed, when it comes to launching software, of ensuring that we're meeting our customer service standards and that we're using the tool properly. And so the Support Services Team will be the ones to help ensure the success of that program. So that's why it's added as a work plan item for 2020.
Okay, so we, it's, it's a work in progress?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the second set of questions are, you came up, you did Creative Staffing Solutions... solutions for greater flexibility. What did you come up with? Any examples of some of the things? I'm just trying to think if we might be able to leverage them elsewhere.
Sure, so we, we had a retirement among our team and we were able to reallocate that position into 1.5 FTEs, with that 0.5 FTE being more of a float position that can provide administrative tasks and support to many different departments and ensure that we can provide some time and some capacity among our other staff members to do their more daily tasks that they support our departments with.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Councilmember Walsh.
I see in the budget that there is $87,000 that is a transfer out of Support Services. Do you know what that covers? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Autumn? Nope. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we're done with the slides.
We had a couple final ones.
Okay.
Wanted to, first and foremost, thank you. We have come to the end of the department presentations. We wanted to revisit or at least put back up on the screen the policy questions, the overall policy questions, which have kind of bookended these discussions. They haven't gone away, they are still there. And I don't think I need to read them again, but they're there just for, to remind you. We have also been trying to be as diligent as we can in answering your questions. Beth, prior to tonight's meeting, I think the total number was 60...
It was more than that, 84.
And I bet you there's at least 20 or 30 more this evening. So we're in excess of 100 council questions we've answered thus far, how many?
Before this evening, we had 51 less left, 52 left to go, so we'd answered approximately 30 some odd questions.
So we figure we have 60 or 70 more questions to answer. Some are, they come in all sizes, as I think you've heard. We are going to do our level best between now and the end of the week to answer as many more as we can. We will not answer them all and we probably don't even have a timeframe based on some of the doozies from tonight of when we will have all of them answered. But we will not have them all answered prior to next week when we are going to respectfully ask that you begin deliberations. So if there is anything that has been asked that has not been answered, that you believe is critical to your ability to begin those deliberations, if you could let us know either right now or sometime over the next couple of days, we will do our level best to move those to the top of the list. But as you've all heard them asked over the last several meetings, some of them are very complex, require a lot of digging on part of staff, which we're happy to do. It's just a matter of how quickly we can do all that. But our hope is that next week, the council will begin deliberating. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, Mayor Polly and I have, have been chatting. She would very much like either to come back before the council with some ideas or suggestions for you, either directly or through staff, you know, to kind of respond to some of the questions. You know, clearly, in my mind, in her mind, the issue of what to do with water rates, what to do with the utility taxes really, if not a top question from a dollars and cents standpoint, near the top. And if there is alternate proposals, we would, staff is considering with the mayor, alternate proposals, which we'd like to get in front of you perhaps right away as you begin your deliberations. Because if there is a consensus then on the utility rates and the utility taxes, that will give us a sense of how far off we are from the proposed budget that we presented with you with those changes that would be balanced. I have heard other things that my sense is that there's probably a majority support to change. We then also would need to find additional revenues to support that. I've gone back to the staff and asked for additional adjustments that could be used to help that process. We received those at the end of last week. We are going to work during the course of this week to evaluate them, to see what may make sense to propose to you in order to either put things back in that have been cut in order to balance things out. We are running out of options. I've heard loud and clear from the council that while revenue increases will be considered, certainly they're not on the top of anyone's list. And so if there's additional dollars we need to generate, those would have to come with additional reductions. I've also heard from the council frustration with the reductions that are already built into this budget. And so that is a difficult, a difficult task. But if we can have a better sense of where we stand with the utility rates and the utility taxes and know how much of that will be ultimately included in the budget or will not be, my sense is things flow from there. And Mayor Polly, I think agrees with that. So council president, members of the council, you know, will be prepared to, you know, start the discussions with sort of those thoughts, if that's all right. I also understand that a tote board has been used in the past, a spreadsheet that could be projected on the screen to keep track. So we're prepared to at least have one constructed so that as the council deliberates, you'll have that to know where you stand. That's kind of where our thoughts are. If there's anything else that the council would like either to direct us to think about or process suggestions so that we can hit the ground running next week, that would be much appreciated.
So the challenge is going to be starting to deliberate when we still have the majority of the questions that we've asked open. And I think a way that we can do that is, you know, you mentioned the spreadsheet. What I think we should do next week is we should start building that spreadsheet. And I think you can start, you can start... Is there something for council?
I'm sorry, I was just confirming.
So I, you know, it'd be acceptable for the administration to draft, I'm struggling with this, this idea that the administration wants to respond to our, you know, the issues that have come up. I think the way to respond would be in building that options list. Think of it as, you know, I want to buy, is people who buy Oldsmobiles anymore, Buicks, you know, and these are the options that I want, right? And they have to add up to, you know, in our case, an even amount of money, right? So I think the administration could build, could start building those response planks and that would be a way to incorporate feedback, if you will, on it. And then I think if the administration drafted some of those, then what we could do next week is council members could arrive with the additional planks that they want to be considered. And next week's meeting could be building that list, which would give another week for the administration to answer a further, hopefully large fraction of the open questions that are out there. And then the next meeting after the next meeting, we would actually be able to start, we could sequence that list of planks and then start thumbs upping and thumbs downing, which is where the real decision-making comes and needing to get to the net balance of all the planks put together. And so if there, if the administration came back and some, with a, with a draft and somebody didn't see an option that they thought that they had discussed, then next week, they could say, you know, I want to, you know, this is the plank that I want to have added.
Would, would the council consider having a discussion regarding the utility rates and utility taxes upfront or just have that be included as another plank among many planks?
Well, let me ask my fellow council members on this question. Having seen where we're at and understanding that where the big levers are, do we want to attempt to look at the big levers separate from the overall picture? Councilmember Winterstein, you have your mic ready.
Well, I had it on before. As you were just talking, I was gonna, wasn't planning on answering that question beforehand, but since you've asked, I do think that teeing those up early on is wise.
By teeing up, do you mean thumbs upping, thumbs downing on specific options within?
How did you phrase your question?
I think it's a discussion. I, I think, again, in chatting with Mayor Polly about this, I think that there are, there are multiple pieces that deal, especially with water.
Yes.
And I, and I, and I think we both feel it would be useful for the council to talk about, talk about water in the multi-part, because there's the issues of the rates, there's the issue of taxes, there's the issue of the treatment plant, there's the issue of fluoridation, there's the issue of the cascade water, bulk purchase, all of that sort of swimming, pardon the pun, around. And, you know, I think we want to flush it out a little bit more so that, so that we know that it's a clean budget moving forward with all of that. I'm sorry, it's late. But again, I think that there are those, there's those opportunities. And if the council's agreeable to have that discussion, that's a large chunk of money that either will be included in the budget, will not be included in the budget, and then I think the rest of the planks can build from there.
I think we need to be super clear what have that discussion means, right? If have that discussion means vote, make a decision at next week's meeting, then I'm wondering if we have enough information to make those decisions, given that we have less than half of our questions answered about this budget so far.
And if I may, I think, my thought is to focus on water. I think we've answered, there's been lots of discussions, not only part of the budget process, but leading up to the budget process, about issues relating to water, the facilities, the rates, the taxes. We can scrub through the questions if there are any that are unanswered on the water questions. We can make sure that those, I have, I haven't done a look myself recently. Have you, Beth?
So there, there are only a few water questions outstanding, I believe, but we are going to try and get you as many answers to those remaining 50 to 51 questions by the end of the week. So we are endeavoring to do that. I cannot promise we will get every last one and we'll have to evaluate the questions we received tonight, but we are endeavoring to get a large majority of those questions answered by the end of the week. And then some we will be addressing at the council meeting next Monday. We'll be making verbal presentations next Monday evening.
I'm guessing Beth has one more slide and it might even be the timeline one. And I think what it shows is that next week, it was supposed to be a public hearing on revenue sources and then it's two weeks from tonight where we begin deliberations.
I, I actually did not bring the process slide, but I should have, shouldn't I have? Yeah, shame on me. So next week, Monday, we are, we are having the public hearing on the revenues and the first public hearing on the budget. We're also going to be presenting to you the, the agenda bill on the utility tax and the agenda bill on the parks fees, because those would need to be adopted as well. So we'll be transmitting, there are two public hearings, transmitting ordinances on the actual budget ordinance and the salary ordinance, the property tax ordinance, the utility tax ordinance and the parks fee ordinance. So those will be discussion items next Monday. And then we have a tentative session scheduled for next Wednesday for budget deliberations and then another budget deliberation session set for October 28th and then final deliberations November 6th. I think I have it all memorized now with adoption on November 18th.
Yeah, you don't have that tentative one in that timeline that you show. It's just, it's, it's this Monday, next Monday, two Mondays out.
Yeah, because we, we weren't sure at the time that that, it's been tentatively on the schedule, we weren't sure if we were going to need it or not.
And that was what I was trying to get at. What was the actual plan for next Monday? It's a regular council meeting, it's not a work session.
Correct.
So there wouldn't be deliberations at that point, not planned?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless the council wished to add a session after the council meeting. Right now, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13 items of which 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 are consent.
And then we do have the 20, the other option would be to start deliberations the 23rd rather than after the meeting on the 21st.
We also have a work session on the 22nd and utility rates are scheduled to be on the work session for the 22nd.
I really don't think we should try to parse this this evening. It's been a very long evening. I think everybody's very tired. So I'm tired, I'm not speaking for anybody else. So can we not try to parse this right this very minute?
Certainly.
You've clearly made critical, you know, that we have some larger decisions ahead of, you know, that are going to, that are going to need to occur sooner rather than just, you know, randomly going through a set of decisions on this budget. But I, four hours in is not...
I think it's time to have this conversation. But I will offer council members... Still trying to finish what I really wanted to get to and that was, that was part of it about the planned schedule. But I do agree, and I think you mentioned some things, especially like fluoridation question, and I'm not sure how that plays into the budget discussion. But when it comes, there's, there's two, right? One is about revenue, another one is, is about, is about a water treatment plant. And yeah, I, I agree that those, those are big items and they, and we should attempt to tackle those as soon as possible, but I'm not sure. I don't want to complicate it with something that doesn't have to be the budget. Well, how'd that happen? Did you turn mine off? That was amazing. That may or may not be related to the budget.
Councilmember Hunt.
So philosophically, I agree that discussing the bigger picture items upfront makes sense. I don't think it makes sense for us to go into all of the minutia if, because those are going to depend on the bigger picture items anyway. So that, that makes sense to me. One thing I wanted to add though is that I feel that the CIP, items in the CIP of which the water treatment plant is one of them, should be on the table for budget decision. We were looking at the CIP with different information at that time about what we thought our revenue was going to be. And part of why you have a plan is that you can plan with the information you have and then you can go forward and use that plan as guidance, but you can make course corrections. And so I think, you know, we've made changes to a lot of the projects that we thought we were going to be doing in this budget and the CIP remains basically the same. And I think we should revisit that and see if there are projects that we can do over the course of multiple years or, or change the scope on. And I think that would provide us a tool to help offset some of the other cuts in the budget.
But don't very few of the things on the CIP, very few of them are general fund?
Not very few. Some, some are general fund and some are, water treatment plant is not, but some are drawing from the general fund. And some, some I think are from other funds that also have cuts. So I just think in the bigger picture of while we're looking at the budget, for example, Parks has a number of these items. And so could we look at reallocating from some of these projects? That's my, my preference, it's come up that there's different philosophical stances on the CIP, but for me, I feel strongly that we've been presented with a CIP that's a plan for five years, but within those five years and then correcting for different conditions as they emerge is an important part of vetting those projects over time.
Well, it's certainly council's prerogative, I mean, it's council's job to decide what the spending for 2020. And if the council decides that it wants to provide more direction on 20, expand what we want to cover in the conversation about 2020 spending than we originally planned as a result of the identification of the budget deficit, then that is absolutely our prerogative. Councilmember Walsh.
So, first time doing this, so what I think I need to know in order to be prepared for Monday is if we're discussing the utility... the utility tax and utility rates, or if we're discussing and trying to create a list of, here are the things that I'd like added or subtracted or considered for the budget, so that I can come to the meeting as prepared as possible. So, perhaps the question is, when will we know what we are discussing on Monday?
I think Council Deputy President Batis has some thoughts on that.
So, the, on the planning calendar right now, we do have the utility tax is one of the regular business items to direct administration. So, from my understanding is that we will be discussing that, that, that was the plan, to be discussing that on Monday, in addition to parks and rec fees, direct administration, and also cemetery fees, a couple of other items. So, it, it sounds like we, the planning is that we would be talking about utility tax, and I would, and just with the addition of water, obviously, we would need to take a look at the schedule. I'm, I am okay with talking about, having a discussion about some of those bigger items. I think that that makes sense before going into, as Councilmember Hunt said, you know, sort of delving into the minutia, because I think we, having that upfront discussion would be good. But utility taxes already...
So, that's what's in the plan. Councilmember Ray?
I think we have a couple of really big issues, and I think we can identify those big issues. I think we need to nail those down before we can have any other kind of a meaningful discussion, because right now, we're very far apart. Not fair. We're not settled on what the, what the revenue picture's going to look like. And so, until we settle the revenue picture, we don't know what the expense picture's going to look like. So, what I would like to propose, because it's a late hour, is that council leadership work with the administration to clearly identify what those couple of really big issues that we need to hammer through are, and let us know so that we can come back on Monday and hammer through those big issues. My challenge to you.
I, if council is okay with that, I, that's, that's a fine suggestion. Councilmember Winterstein?
I'm in leadership on Wednesday, and we'll talk about it. Beth, question for you. I actually started to draft an email today as, during the meeting, "Hey, let's look at the capital list that's in here." And, and I was doing my own research and, and the CIP document, and it appears to me that nothing is paid directly by general fund. There's only debt service that's, general fund is used for. So, in other words, if we're going to do a million dollar project, we may have borrowed some money, and we're paying the debt off of that. And so, to Councilmember Hunt's question, it's what's new in there? It's debt that we haven't issued yet that hasn't anything to do with Providence Point and an intersection up there, that what else is in here that would be new debt?
Yes. So, the budget assumes, assumes 12 to 13 million dollars worth of debt issued in 2020 using the general fund as the revenue source. So, that includes, Providence Point is the big one. The Northwest Semamish Connectivity is the other big one. And then, there are a series of smaller projects, mostly in the park space, that make up that 12 to 13 million dollars that I cited. The debt service on those 12 million dollars of bonds, 12 to 13 million dollars of bonds, is because we've wrapped the debt around existing debt service, is only about 470, 480,000 dollars. So, the big one being, the big one being Providence Point, and the other one being Northwest Semamish Road together, those are close to 11 million dollars, making up that 469,000 dollars worth of debt service.
I totally did not expect that level of detail. Thank you very much. It was really kind of another question into your queue, but thank you.
Okay. So, the proposal, Councilmember Ray's suggestion, is that we tackle revenue sources and address revenue source issues at next Monday's meeting to help set the groundwork for expenditure side, the, the much larger number of items on the expenditure side. Is that correct?
That would be correct, and I would use a fairly large definition of revenue to include utility rates.
Fair enough. Is that acceptable to the rest of the council? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I, I think there are four items on Monday's men, Monday's agenda, directing the administration, I assume, is to prepare agenda bills for revenue sources for us to adopt later. So, we're not going to... There's no action that night. So, I, so I just, I guess I just wanted it to be clear, as this gets discussed in leadership on Wednesday, that the, it's thought through that what happens on Monday, which could be the likely scenario, that the council doesn't yet, hasn't yet gelled its thoughts or had done its thumbs up, their thumbs down, so that we have, we're not making a bunch of sausage on Monday. So, we have our options, and what I wanted to say, because I don't think we can work through all of it on Monday, because we're not voting on it. We're just directing to prepare agenda bills, which we can approve or not approve later.
So, one of those temperature of the room kind of, kind of not making, I'm confused about...
Well, I think we're going to get a lot, I think we're going to get more information on, my guess is, information on Monday, enough information that there may be some, do we have any public hearings set, or is it, okay, is it for all the revenue sources?
Correct.
So, we're going to have to have enough information to have public hearings. But we've been sensitive in the past to make it look as though we're, you know, having a public hearing and then making a decision. And so, because of, it's kind of, you know, the chicken and the egg. I mean, directing the administration to prepare an agenda bill, even though we will not have made a decision yet because letting it sit out there. So, if we, I don't know if I'm making myself clear. Again, it's late. But, so, we have information, we opened a public hearing, and then, after that public hearing, we're probably going to direct the administration to prepare agenda bills, but we're not going to know how the council's going to vote until later.
Right.
Yeah, just so, just want to make it clear, because we keep talking about getting things ironed out on Monday. I don't think we're going to get things ironed out on Monday.
Got it. We're just going to tee things up.
It's just part, yeah, it's just part of the process.
Got it. Okay. Is that the feedback you're looking for, Welling?
Just trying to get a sense of, of sequence, because I think you, you're the council, you set your agenda, and you have maximum flexibility. I, I think, as stated, that's what's on the agenda schedule, which would be the, like a veteran introduction of the ordinances, setting of the agenda bill for future adoption. So, you could have no discussion.
Right. But our next discussion would be on Wednesday, and I do think that that is the time where maybe the very first item on our deliberations list is the revenue sources and the big ticket items.
Wednesday, the 23rd.
Wednesday, the, two days later. Then, we will have gotten information, we will have thought about it.
Flipped on it.
We won't be so tired at 6:30.
Yes.
And then, I think we are be, then I think we're teed up to have a good substantive conversation about that, and then we can give you much better feedback about it.
That sounds eminently reasonable. And Councilmember Winterstein?
But be aware that even directing the administration to prepare an agenda bill, it will have terms in it. It will have terms. And so, there's nothing stopping us from having a lot of hard conversation, even on Monday night, even in the direction to create those agenda bills. Because when you say create an agenda bill with these terms in here, it's like a pre-vote. You've, now you've got something you have to respond to. So, that's the way it'll unfold.
Any other...
Yeah. Except that the agenda bill's not going to have to be prepared on Tuesday, and we're going to have further deliberations on Wednesday. So, I think one of the options to keep in mind on leadership and for the administration is, I just lost it. That you may get further feedback about agenda bill on Wednesday, and that will help inform the administration about, doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be finalized. That direction doesn't necessarily have to be finalized on Monday.
And we're looking to take then a vote on November...
On the property tax, the vote is scheduled for November 4th. Everything else, the vote is scheduled for November 18th.
Because we will, we will not have a full council after that.
All right. Any other closing comments from any other council members? Going once, going twice. I see confused looks. Do you have a question, Councilmember Winterstein?
We want, there'll be one less council member after the 18th.
No? We'll have, we'll just have a new council member in her place.
Will there still be one less?
Nope.
I'm new.
Councilmember Goodman? No? All right. That were adjourned. Thank you.